Thank you, councillors. Thank you. I now open the ordinary council meeting of Randwick City Council on the 28th of February 2023 at 7:06pm. Before we begin, I would actually like to acknowledge the recent passing of former Randwick Municipal Council Alderman Ms Marita Berg on the 16th of February 2023. Ms Berg was a member of the Australian Labor Party and was elected as an alderman from 1980 to 1983, proudly representing the South Ward for three years. Ms Berg was elected to Randwick Municipal Council as an alderman and prior to becoming a city with councillors. As fellow Randwick City councillors, we all know that representing our community, particularly at a local government level, is a rather thankless, difficult task with very poor remuneration and rather exceptional demands from our community. And the feedback was that Ms Berg was a dedicated, hard worker, a straight shooter, and one who contributed greatly to making sure that the Randwick community was the best that it could be and that they could get as much out of Randwick Municipal Council as they could. Council extends its deepest sympathies to Ms Berg's family and loved ones. In the audience today, we have her daughter Marilyn and former Randwick Council Alderman Scott Fraser, who are in the audience as well. They were obviously deeply touched by Ms Berg alongside the greater community and will greatly miss her and her family and her loved ones. On behalf of Randwick Council and the whole community, we'd like to extend our deepest condolences and our sympathies, as well as a final demonstration of our support and thanks for Ms Berg's contribution to our community. Thank you, and we'll now have a minute of silence. Thank you, councillors. Before you sit down, I would also like to acknowledge the sad passing and recent loss of Mr Walter Wally Bennington on the 17th of February 2023, aged 80. Wally was actively involved in the Malabar community, the RSL, through the Malabar precinct, the combined services, the Kensington and Malabar RSL sub-branch, as well as the Eastern Beaches Local Area Command. He was a dedicated community member that went above and beyond to help others in need. Many of you may have come into contact with Mr Bennington through the precinct, the Malabar RSL, as well as at Randwick citizenship ceremonies over the years. Wally's funeral service will be held on the 2nd of March 2023 at St Andrews Catholic Church, and council will send flowers to the service, a card, as well as our ongoing deepest condolences, and we'll now observe another minute's silence. Thank you, councillors. Councillors, it now being the first council meeting for 2023, we thought it was appropriate to mark the beginning of the council year with a welcome to country. Tonight, we're joined with, from Uncle Lloyd Walker, who'll be performing the Welcome to Country. He is an Aboriginal man and respected member of the Laparooz community in Sydney. He grew up in Laparooz, attending Laparooz Public School and as well as Matherville High, and it was during his childhood that Lloyd discovered his love of sport and went on to represent Australia, where he played eight Test matches for the Wallabies from 1989 to 1984. He's a proud father of two and currently resides at Laparooz and sits on the New South Wales Parole Board, believing that it is important to have Aboriginal people involved in the active decision-making process, and in doing so, hopefully we'll be able to together move forward as a nation. So with that, I'd like you to open the 2023 council year.
Thank you. Ngabi, Kemurie, Daralanga, Geru Guru, Nurunayang. Good evening, mayor, councillors, directors, ladies and gentlemen, and children. In my marrakesh in the local Aboriginal language, I said, "I'm speaking to you in Darawal, we're standing on Gadigal land. On behalf of the Laparooz Aboriginal community, I'd like to welcome everyone here today. I'd like to pay my respects to elders, past and present. My grandfather's grandmother, Mary Russell, was from coastal Sydney. My grandfather's grandfather, Joseph Dixon, was from Illawarra region. Our people moved freely between Illawarra and coastal Sydney. We have notable identities of the 1800s, Thomas Tamara and Billy Wentworth. Our people would hunt, gather, look after land and the waterways. Until the formation of the New South Wales Aboriginal Protection Board in 1893, where all coastal Aboriginals were relocated to the Laparooz Reserve, to be out of sight and out of mind of the colony. 139 years later, and Sydney growing around us, we strive to stay in our traditional lands for the next 139 years and beyond, for our children's sake. So once again, a warm welcome, and I wish you the best in your decision-making for our the year. As the mayor just said, it's not an easy job, but I guess someone's got to do it." Nandwabi.
Thank you. Thank you. Before we're seated, I'll call upon councillor Hamilton to please read the prayer.
Almighty God, we humbly beseech you to bestow your blessings upon this council and to direct and prosper our deliberations to the advancement of your glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Randwick and Australia. Amen.
Thank you, councillors. Please be seated. Okay, thank you. Councillors, I call for apologies and leaves of absence. Being a full house, there being no apologies or moves of absence. Are there any requests to attend by audiovisual link? No, there being no requests, we'll now move on to the next item. Confirmation of the minutes. Can I please have someone to move and second the minutes of the 13th of December 2022? Moved councillor Luxford, seconded councillor Rosenfeld. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Can I please have somebody move the minutes of the extraordinary meeting on the 8th of February 2023? Moved councillor Burst, seconded councillor Sed. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Declarations of pecuniary or non-pecuniary interests. Councillors, are there any declarations? Councillors, are there any declarations? Okay, there's a declaration from councillor Chapel.
Just in relation to NM1023, that the speaker is known to me.
NM1020. Okay, thank you. Are there any other declarations? Councillor Veitch?
Yes, also NM723 and MM923. Speakers are known to me.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further declarations? Councillor Hamilton?
NM923, Aunty Barbara Sims-Kearley is known to me.
Thank you. Are there any further declarations? Councillors, I have a declaration relating to, where is it? NM8/23, protecting the right of peaceful, non-violent protest in New South Wales and the arrest of a UNSW student. My employing member, the member from Aruba and Shadow Attorney General, had carriage of this legislation in the Parliament of New South Wales. I had no involvement in this particular work. I'm declaring a non-significant, non-pecuniary interest. We'll be voting on the matter. Are there any further declarations? Okay, thank you, councillors. If at any point it comes to your attention that you may have a declaration, please interrupt the proceedings of the meeting and I'll happily take it. Okay, thank you. There being no further declarations, we move to addresses of council by members of the public. At this point, for members of the public, I am going to read a chairperson's announcement, and I would request that you just follow through, because there are some conditions on you. In respect to the Privacy and Personal Information Protection Act, members of the public are advised that the proceedings of this meeting will be recorded for the purposes of clause 520 to 523 of the council's Code of Meeting Practice. Audio/video recording of meetings are prohibited without the express permission of council. A person may be expelled from the meeting for using or having used an audio/video recorder without the express authority of council. I will now move to the announcement of speakers. All members of the public addressing tonight's meeting will have a maximum of four minutes in which to put forward their case with no extensions available. Presenters will be stopped when the four minutes has expired. Councillors, maybe are allowed to ask questions of speakers. It is a matter for you whether or not you would like to answer that. The responses to that are not contained within that four minutes. Yes, councillor D'Souza?
Sorry, Mr Mayor, I saw Aunty Barbara in the audience and she was going to speak on another notice of motion, and with your permission, and I was hoping she would be able to speak on my notice of motion to with regards truth and reconciliation, please.
By virtue of the nature of the notice of motion, I will allow that. So that is, Mr Kelly, it is NM1/23, notice of motion from councillor D'Souza, investigating and establishing a truth and reconciliation group. I will deal with that item after NM9/23.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Yep, thank you. 1/23, okay, and there's Aunty Barb. Okay, we now move to the first speaker, which we have this evening, CS1/23, Randwick Petersham Cricket, request for an additional funding. Speaking for is Mr Mike Whitney. Thank you, just over there.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillors, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight changes in our management agreement for Coogee, Snape, and Kensington. Before I hand over to our CFO, Jeremy Jarstrab, to explain a little bit more about how that we'd like to see that work, I'd like to welcome John Stewart. John's the CEO of our club, and without these two gentlemen, working very hard for our club, it wouldn't be in the position it is. Again, thank you for the opportunity to address the council tonight. I would just like to say, we really respect the relationship that we have with the Randwick Council. Randwick Cricket Club and Randwick Petersham Cricket Club have been the historical summer hires of those three grounds for nearly 125 years, and we really respect that. We have a wonderful relationship, working relationship with people like Todd Clark, who's up there tonight, Ryan Zammatt, and there's been ongoing works at those grounds for a number of years now. So we'd also like to thank the council for the upgrades that have been done at Coogee Oval, which was a very big one with the stand, also at Snape, which is our training facilities. We've just had lights put up there, and also at Kensington, we've just had new side screens put up there. So these all play in for not only us, but for the winner sports as well. We haven't asked you for much money over the last few years for our maintenance agreement because we knew things were very tough with COVID and things like that, but the gap is getting a little bit bigger, and we've come up here tonight to see if we can just make the gap in our finances a little bit smaller. Of course, the more finances we have to put into other things is really good for the club, our social programs, our youth programs, and I'd like to announce to all the ladies in the room tonight that the Randwick Petersham Cricket Club, hopefully next season, but definitely within the next two seasons, we hope to have two female teams playing in the competition. So that's going to be great for women's cricket in the area, and we're very, very, very keen to do that. Thank you, thanks. I'd also like to acknowledge Aunty Barbara and Uncle Lloyd. It's amazing how the circles of life just meshed together. Lloydie and I played footy together out at Laparooz when we were kids. He was actually the captain and I was the vice captain of a number of the sides, including the Ella Brothers. So it was a pretty, pretty good bloody team, let me tell you, but to see Lloyd here tonight's just fantastic. I'd now like to hand over to our CFO, Gerry Mejastrab, to just talk a bit more about the technicalities of what we'd like to ask you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, President. Thank you very much, councillors, directors, and general public for listening to us today. It's a very great opportunity to come up and talk with you. So when I took over as the CFO of the club in 2019, I took a very long and deep review of the club's finances, and we did notice that the gap between the cost of maintaining the grounds during the summer and the amount that we very graciously received from council had increased by quite an amount from the period of 2012 to 2020. So between 2012 and 2020, the amount that we received from council roughly year on year was increasing 1.25%. Our costs between 2012 and 2018 were increasing instead about 3% to 5%. Then in years 2019 and 2020, in agreement with green options who take care of the grounds, it was decided that more work would need to be put in to ensure that the grounds are up to the standard of New South Wales Premier Cricket, and those costs increased in 2019 by 7%, and then another 12% in 2020, as was alluded to by the President. While we didn't identify this gap a lot earlier, during the COVID years, one of the, I would say, benefits, not that there were too many benefits from it, was that the costs were down in those few years. As such, we were able to get by with the amount. Unfortunately now though, this gap is quite large now, and as such, we are requesting the councillors to take into consideration requests for an extra $10,000 for each of the grounds, Coogee, Snape, and Kensington, on top of the $80,000 that is currently provided to us.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the speakers? There's a question from councillor Veitch, and then there's a question from councillor Burst.
Hi, thanks for coming in. I just wanted to find out how much of a contribution does the club make towards the grounds, and do you get any funding from like the New South Wales Government, for example? Thank you.
Thank you very much for the question. So to answer that, the amount that we receive from the council and the gap that we had then covered by maintenance, we look for alternative ways of funding that. So for example, a lot of that will either come through sponsorship, that we as a club will go out and seek out for ourselves, and in addition to that, we also are allowed to hire out the ground for cricketing purposes, which we will do to schools during the week and to the junior clubs on the weekends, so that they have the opportunity to play on some of Sydney's best grounds. So in terms of what we receive from New South Wales Government, this would only be in exceptional circumstances. So if we needed some work done to the ground, for example, we're looking to get the square at Kensington raised so that it's a nice even surface where it's currently dipping. This would be done through something like the Community Building Project Grants. So in terms of the general maintenance, that would be funded through sponsorship and through ground hire.
Are you looking for an exact figure of what we put in?
Oh, yes, absolutely. So currently, we would be between $90,000 and $100,000 per season. And while we understand, and what we're asking the councillors, we understand from this agreement that we will have to fund some of it ourselves, just given that we are a community club, we are just looking for a little bit of assistance to ensure that that gap is a little more manageable and that the money that we do get from sponsorship and from the government can then go into programs that, for example, go towards encouraging women's cricket and getting the girls to come and play for us.
Thank you. I have a question from councillor Burst, and I've got a councillor Chapel.
Thank you, Wit, and the team for coming in tonight. So these extra funds, will they help to ensure that the grounds and the wickets are up to the standard for playing state competitions? And will this money have a positive impact on creating future state and Australian cricketers in the future? As you went through this program and played down there and became an Australian cricketer, so the question is, will it ensure we have the next generation of state and test cricketers?
Thank you, Billy. Yeah, well, that's what we're hoping to do all the time. There's been a lot of great cricketers go through Randwick and Randwick Petersham Cricket Club, numbers of New South Wales players and Australian representatives, and what we need and what we want to do is to have our three grounds that are in the Randwick City, the best grounds that they can be. They get judged every week by the umpires, and sometimes the grounds are a little bit misjudged because the umpires, they're basically not groundsmen, and they don't understand sometimes the situation. So some of the ratings for our grounds have been down, but there is rules and regulations from the Sydney Cricket Association Cricket New South Wales that the grounds need to be at a specific standard. We're in the process, councillor Burst, of actually wanting to get Coogee up to a level that we can go to Cricket New South Wales and see if they want to play BBL games there, maybe women's Test matches or women's one days. Just recently, we've had the Australian over 70s play the England over 70s down there on a Sunday. The ground was magnificent, the English players were just beside themselves. I continually told them that they were playing at the seaside resort, and if they wanted to have a swim during the lunch break, just pop across the road. It was a great day. So we're hoping to lift the standard of the ground by putting more money into it so that we can do things, and that's got to be a great thing for all the cricket locally. As well as, to answer your question, Billy, yes, the better the wicket and the ground is, the better players you produce, more runs they can score, the more wickets, and that gives them an opportunity to play high level. Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a question from councillor Chapel. I'll then go to councillor D'Souza.
Sorry. Councillor Best? Thanks so much for that. Just on the subject of women and girls teams, can you let us know how many of those you have currently and kind of what the history of the club is with relation to having women's and girls teams, what your kind of future projections are? I know it's mentioned in there, but I didn't see anything particularly concrete in terms of projections for the next kind of two, five, 10 years, and I'd love to know if you already have the facilities to support women's and girls teams because we know that's an issue.
Thank you very much for that question. Thank you very much for that question. We've worked very hard in the last five years to put a women's cricket team in. We were ready four and five years ago. We'd made a number of presentations to Cricket New South Wales and the Sydney Cricket Association and the people that are involved in Cricket New South Wales, uh, putting the women's team together. The goalpost changed a little bit over a couple of those years. And some of our requests have fallen on deaf ears in there. I mean, our CEO, John, has worked very closely with Jeremy to almost have a couple of teams ready for two or three years. But there has just seemed to be a little bit of a speed hump for some reason. The goalpost changed originally. Originally Cricket New South Wales wanted us to merge with University of New South Wales and the Eastern Suburbs Career Club to create the Eastern Suburbs Women's Cricket Team. And we didn't want that because we're Randwick Petersham. We want our women playing under our banner. Do we have the facilities? Yes, we do at Snape, we do now. We have seven or eight turf wickets and artificial wickets there. We plan to train the ladies on a, on a different day, but again, have them down with all the cricketers on a, on a specific day to meld the whole club together. Of course, there's different sponsors that will be involved. We've already targeted some of those and I'm talking to people now to come on and, and sponsor the girls teams. So to answer your question, we've been ready. The trouble is, when we keep being put on the back burner, the girls go and play in other places. And we're in a process now of trying to bring some of the players back. But we also have a hub here in, in this area, the Southeastern Junior Cricket Association that we can draw on. We're very, very keen, we've been very keen for five years. We're very disappointed that we already haven't had a, a female team play. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor de Souza. Uh, councillor de Souza?
How many people, young people and mature people, do you give opportunities to? What I'm saying is your membership, how many, what is the size of your club?
We've got seven teams that we roll out every weekend, councillor de Souza. Uh, five grade teams, which is specified by Cricket New South Wales and the SCA. And then two teams under that in a metropolitan competition. If we add two women's teams to that, that'll be nine and that would be one of the biggest clubs in Sydney.
So you're expanding and, and these extra funds will also help you in your new program, I guess? That's the important point.
Absolutely.
Yes.
We've got about a hundred and twenty playing.
Or we're in a form of paralysis, we're actually moving forward and we know the importance of team sport. So I guess you've already answered my question that you've got quite a big club and you're getting bigger. So funding would make a big difference.
Look, I probably can say this, we're one of the biggest clubs in Sydney. I only ever played for Randwick, but we merged with Petersham Maryville twenty three seasons ago. Our area now goes out to Nellie Bankstown, but all of the grounds that we use in that area are responsible of the inner west council. So we're one of the only clubs in Sydney that deals with two councils. Tonight, we're talking about the grounds in the Randwick city area. And for me, that's my traditional home. I mean, I'm going, been going down to Coogee Oval since I was seven. I played my first game for Randwick at Snape Park. This is my home and, and I love it and I really care about it and I take our responsibilities for these grounds very, very seriously.
Yep, just microphone councillor de Souza.
Which, I, I've got to know, because people often talk about legendary stuff. The story goes that your, your mother used to be in a, in a car parked at Coogee Oval watching you play. Is that true or is that just legend?
That's true. And every now and again, she'd pull out a blanket, Noel, and put it at the north end of, of Coogee Oval and sit there and watch me play, never say too much, except if I bowled a bouncer and hit someone with the ball, I'd walk down to find it and she'd say, not very nice hitting that man with the ball, Michael, but of course, that's just part of the game. But she did.
But she watched nearly every game, they tell.
That's right. And, uh, when I played for New South Wales, she had a special seat in the lady stand and watched me play there as well.
Hey, good on you. Good on both of you.
Thank you very much, Noel, thank you.
Thank you. There are any further questions? There being no further questions, thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor.
We now move on to the, uh, speakers on N M ten slash twenty three. Notice of motion from councillor Chapel, improving drainage options on Anzac Parade between Lawson Street and Hillary Parade. Uh, speaking for is Ms. Christie Norwood. Thank you.
Thank you, councillors. Uh, so my name's Christie Norwood. I'm a resident at one one eight seven, uh, Anzac Parade and I'm here to raise the issue of the serious flooding to the houses on our block. Thanks. Uh, so the gutter drain outside one one eight five is grossly inadequate to handle heavy rain. It blocks easily and the water backs up into the adjacent properties despite desperate efforts by owners to keep the drains free of debris. Cars and property have been damaged on numerous occasions. Uh, residents who've been there for forty five years report this has been happening for over twenty years. Uh, now at the slightest rain, the residents, some of whom are elderly, uh, will actually immediately attend to the drain and clear the debris. And this often occurs multiple times during a storm and sometimes in the middle of the night and in dangerous conditions, as you can see there. Uh, despite these efforts, there have been two serious flooding incidents just this month, uh, which has caused tens of thousands of dollars, um, damage to property and my family has lost our car. Uh, in both these incidents, the adjacent medium, uh, island strip also collapsed, uh, with debris obstructing the southbound lanes of the road. What's particularly upsetting, uh, is that this is actually something that council is aware of. Um, there is a council flood map, uh, which indicates that the street in front of our houses, uh, is deemed unsafe for peo- people and for vehicles. Uh, so council have been contacted, uh, via phone and email multiple times over the years, um, and the issue hasn't been resolved. Council have advised residents that this is an RMS issue and RMS have advised that this is a council issue. So we're here tonight to request that the council resolve this issue immediately before there's further damage to property, uh, and cars. Or even worse, one of the residents is injured or killed while trying to protect their property. So on the twenty second of February, uh, council staff, including Sebastian Lee Costumac, coordinator of Road Services, I believe, uh, attended the site to investigate and examine the drains. Uh, we also, uh, arranged for our own hydraulic engineer, Rob Gruber from Acor Consulting, to come and give us advice. Uh, the three things that we believe, uh, are required to rectify the situation. So first of all, we need a new drain, um, with an appropriate grate that doesn't block. Um, and that can be put quite, um, close, like it needs a curb inlet pit, I'm told, close to the current drain. Um, and Sebastian tells me that that can be done quite easily within the next few weeks, which is great. Uh, the next thing that we're requesting, um, the slide just before, I don't know if you saw it, debris builds up along the road, mostly from the trees and grass clippings along the medium island strip. And currently the street sweeping goes around the cars, or we've actually been told they actively avoid the pine needles because it clogs up their machinery. Uh, so we request that there's cleaning of the debris of both lanes regularly and not just when we call them as it's been in the past. Uh, as done in other councils, we request that the debris is manually swept from behind the cars rather than just avoided. And lastly, the pipes, if you move to the next one, so this is the inlet, the pipes across the road. So there's pipes from three different drains and they all funnel into the one outlet pipe of a similar size, which is just not big enough. So there's two fifty two centimeter drains, um, pipes from drains from the north and the south. Um, and there, there's a huge amount of water that travels through them. And then there's one thirty centimeter drain from our place. And that all funnels in to a sixty centimeter drain. So as you can imagine, when it drains, when it rains heavily, it just completely gets overwhelmed and goes straight back up our drain, um, and into our properties because that's the, uh, the lowest one. So to rectify this, we've been advised that the outlet drain needs to be enlarged so that it can actually, um, cope with this amount of flow. Uh, if that's too difficult, an alternative would, would be to add a surcharge pit where the four drains meet in the, in, in the middle, um, part, um, which has a grate on top, allowing any water overflowing onto the grass area and down to the southbound lanes without causing flooding on the northbound lanes and damage to our properties. Uh, we really appreciate council, for council looking into this and rectifying it as soon as possible.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the speaker? There's a question from councillor Pandefini.
Hi, um, Christie, thanks so much for coming in and sorry to hear about the damage. Is it, was that your car?
Uh, yes, that's the car that is not working.
Oh, my gosh. And how long have you been, um, has this been happening for?
So apparently for twenty years, my neighbours have brought along. Um, so I've only been there since May last year and I wasn't aware of the issue until, um, these two flooding incidents in February. Because what I didn't realise was my neighbours, the second even light rain happens, they are out there. I've got video footage of my neighbours out there at four o'clock in the morning because they hear rain. They wake up and race down there to avoid this. So I was not aware that they have been managing this for years. And it was only when the drains got over, overloaded in February that we, um, got hit and.
Again, sorry, sorry to hear about that. Thanks again for coming in.
Councillor Chapel.
Thank you, Christie, and thank you also to your neighbours for coming along. I know this has been a really difficult time with two flooding events. Um, I just wanted to ask, you mentioned briefly the, the damage to your car and you've shown some of the footage of the road. But I understand there was also flooding into a number of properties along the street.
Yeah, so I didn't show all the photos of inside of our house. But yeah, basically the lower ground floor of our place is uninhabitable, the study, there's a media room, storeroom, everything. Ended up with a few centimeters of water, um, and is still, yeah, carpet's ripped up and uninhabitable, which is unpleasant. Um, our neighbours have been dealing with it for many, many years and, um, I think, yeah, multiple insurance claims that we're now worried that our houses will not be insurable because there's only so, so many times that you can insure.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? There being no further questions of the speaker, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, we now move to G M three slash twenty three, Sydney Film Festival sponsorship twenty twenty three to twenty twenty five. Uh, speaking for, uh, Ms. Georgia Shepherd.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, uh, councillors and ladies and gentlemen. Um, I have just come to speak to you about, um, sponsorship proposal that we've put to the council. Um, Sydney Film Festival comes to the Randwick Ritz, um, every June. And, um, we are seeking additional support from the council this year. Uh, we've had a really great relationship with the council, uh, leading up to this point. Um, and that's consisted of some cash sponsorship and, um, and some marketing support as well. In return, we bring the festival to, um, the Ritz each year. Um, it's really, really well attended. Um, it's been a fantastic cultural event to bring, um, to the Ritz. And, um, uh, we, we are facing this year though, increasing costs, um, that have, uh, coming from the Ritz, they've had to increase their, um, costs, which are being passed on to the festival. Uh, these increases mean that, um, we will have to really reconsider whether we can come to the Ritz, um, at all or how to drastically reduce the program, which would be unfortunate because, uh, since we started coming to the Ritz in twenty seventeen, um, our numbers have really expanded and, um, we think it's a really important thing to have as part of, um, the cultural engagement that the festival, um, uh, does over the whole of Sydney and also the cultural, um, policies of Randwick Council. Um, and also the, the benefits economically that the festival brings to the area. If we just go back a couple of slides, um, there's a, uh, yes, just to this one. We can see how the, um, attendance, the numbers of figures that the festival brings, um, into the area each year. So that's supporting local businesses. Um, we know that, um, sixty percent of the people who come to the festival, uh, combine that with a social event and eat out. Um, and we do get fantastic crowds, so lots of lovely queues, lots of community engagement and conversations around really interesting topics that the festival brings. Um, if we can just go back one more slide, sorry. Um, just to give you an overview of the festival for anybody who doesn't know much about it. Um, it's been around for, um, seventy years this year and, um, has a really broad program. We're at eleven venues and, um, we're really wanting to keep Randwick as one of those important venues. Uh, I do have a video to show just to give you a sense of the festival, um, and this is the last one. So if we might cut to that if we could. I was worried there might be no sound, there is. If we don't have sound, we can maybe just watch it while, while we're talking, but, um. Oh, there we go.
Got a wheat voice. Thank you very much. Are there any questions of the speaker? There's a question from councillor Pandefini.
Um, thanks so much, Georgia, for coming in and, um, for all the work you do. I think that the Sydney Film Festival, I agree with, uh, that all the sentiments in that video. It is a wonderful, um, festival and I find it amazing, the, um, amount of people, amount of my friends who come from different kind of suburbs around Sydney who come to the Ritz, um, who, who don't generally. Um, so I do, I think it does bring, um, a huge amount of, uh, kind of arts and culture to our area. And also, you know, I agree, we always kind of go out for a meal afterwards, which is really positive, which is what we're trying to do, um, in Randwick. Um, are there any other, um, councils around Sydney? I know that City of Sydney must support you, but are there any other councils that, um, are on board?
Yeah, so City of Sydney is a, a huge supporter of the festival, um, and no, at the moment, we are, um, we have had support from Randwick Council, um, and we are approaching other councils this year. It's become really important, we've got to build back, um, culture and the arts. We were very badly hit during COVID. Um, so it's a really important year for the festival, um, just in this next, in next few years really for, um, us to build back and really have that kind of return of audience confidence, which has been pretty good. And actually, the figures in twenty twenty one, I was surprised at Randwick were really strong. Um, but, uh, I think cinemas in general, um, have faced a really, really difficult time. And part of Sydney Film, Sydney Film Festival's, um, mission really is to support cinemas and to support that community coming together, the sharing of stories and, um, films are best seen together, you know, in an audience shared and on a big screen. And, um, I think that's what the vibe that you can get from that video really is, is about how, um, communities coming together to talk about ideas, to talk about stories, um, and giving voice to, you know, um, underrepresented voices, which the festival really does, um, in a, you know, in a really strong way, I think is important. So we, we, we are seeking that from other councils as well, just to really help us build back.
That's great. Thanks again, I'm very excited to, uh, hopefully just all of us building it.
Thank you. Are there any other councillors here?
Thank you for coming in, Georgia. And I think, I'm trying to remember the year that Macario de Souza had his.
Last year.
Was it?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, is there any chance we could get a local filmmaker again?
Oh, we'll be on the lookout, we'll be on the lookout. Councillor said it's, um.
Try as hard as you can.
But that was, uh, that was a, you know, a terrific moment to have a local filmmaker, um, in the cinema where his parents proposed to one another, I think all had their first date. Um, and to have that, to, at the Randwick Ritz was, you know, pretty special.
And the scenes in the movie, as you agree, would be, there was so much, it was really worth it for the community. We really loved it and everyone loved seeing him up there and all that, so.
That's right.
Best of luck. So if you do find one.
Yeah, we'll be on the lookout for sure.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? There being no further questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We now move on to N M seven slash twenty three, notice of motion from councillor Veach, pedestrian safety concerns on the corner of Sturt, Avoca and Bundock Streets, speaking for Diane Nazaroff.
Thanks very much, councillors. So I'm a member of Safe Streets to School Randwick. It's a community group that evolved to call on local governments to build pedestrian crossings and lower speed limits within two kilometers of schools. I've got two school-aged children and I want them to have the option to safely walk or ride to school. And we all know the benefits of this. Unfortunately, two intersections at the, uh, intersection of Sturt and Avoca and Bundock and Avoca, which are very close to three schools, Rainbow Street Public School, Randwick Boys High School and Randwick Girls High School. which are very close to three schools, Rainbow Street Public School, Randwick Boys High School and Randwick Girls' High School, do not have signalised crossings or even a pedestrian island. As you can see in this video, these crossings are very unsafe to cross for pedestrians. So that was recorded at the intersection of Avoca and Sturt a few weeks ago. And as you can see, the Randwick Boy High School students had to weave between traffic to cross the road. It's a good thing that the traffic wasn't moving when they crossed, as is often the case. More than one hundred people have signed our petition in the hope that council will make these two dangerous intersections in Kingsford and Randwick safer to cross. No one's, who, no one who's asked about these intersections ever said to us that these intersections are performing safely from a pedestrian perspective. What they do say is, I use this intersection as a pedestrian often and I know how dangerous, dangerous it is. So much traffic is forced through it and you take risks when crossing at busy times. I cycle through there every day and it's dangerous. As a motorist that use these roads, I'm keenly aware of the amount of traffic at this intersection. And I want my child to be able to walk to school. These streets experienced a dramatic increase in traffic more than five years ago in June two thousand and seventeen, after the New South Wales government, government removed the nine ways roundabout at Kingsford for the light rail. Around the same time, a parent who had children at Rainbow Street Public School told the Southern Courier, someone is going to die if the Sturt Street strip leading up to these intersections is not made safer for pedestrians. Council since provided data that shows that almost a year before these traffic changes for the light rail, more than eighteen thousand vehicles travelled along an area of Avoca Street near these intersections. It begs the question, how many vehicles are travelling between these intersections now? Council's advised that in the five-year period from July two thousand and seventeen, there's been eight reported vehicle incidents at this multi-legged intersection. And it says the intersections are performing safely from a pedestrian perspective, with no incidents reported over the last five years. However, according to crash data provided by the Centre for Road Safety, there was one moderate pedestrian injury there in two thousand and seventeen. Regardless, parents aren't going to look at the intersection, then at the crash data and conclude the intersection is safe. Many parents aren't letting their kids walk to school that way because it is quite clearly unsafe to cross. A need to stress these intersections are not just hard to cross before and after school times, they're hard to cross on weekends. Council has planned for four signalised crossings at these intersections. It says the traffic signals will be a considerable game changer for the whole community. We understand that it's a long and complex process and that the signals are very expensive. But it's now two thousand and twenty-three, more than five years since the increase in traffic at these intersections. We'd like these signalised crossings installed now because it's well overdue. But we know it can take three years between approval and installation. So can we all agree to try to make these intersections safer now and have two pedestrian traffic islands installed immediately? Or do we have to wait for a pedestrian, a child, to die at these intersections before it's made safer? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the speaker? Councillor Veach.
Thanks very much for coming in, Diane. Um, do you live quite close by? Like, is this something that you see fairly often, say?
Yes, I live on Araluan Street, which is leading up on the other side of, of, of Focus Street, just across from the Bundock, um, the barracks, the Randwick Barracks. And, uh, we often ride with the kids, you know, to the environment park. And we just, we're like, wait, 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 and we just think it's really, really clear. And then we just get halfway across the street and we're honked by a car that just comes flying around the corner. It's just hard to navigate, you know, you're looking left, right, behind, front side. You know, it's just a very dreadful, um, area to cross. So for me, for, if James is in year five, when he goes to either Randwick Boys, possibly Marsalan, he'll have to cross those intersections to get to the other side of Randwick. I'd like him to walk. It's twenty minutes. Even if he rides his bike, you know, uh, ten minutes, it's still really, really hard to navigate. Would mean him going out of his way to the Sturt Street crossing, uh, which is, which is what he uses now to get to Rainbow Street. Um, but, you know, regardless, I know my colleague here, Christina, from Safer Streets to School, also rides with her daughter to the French School from the other side of Randwick to the French School. So she's often crossing there, which is why she's here tonight, and it's very dangerous for them. So just risking your life just to get your kids safely to school.
All right. Thank you. Are there any further questions? Oh, yes, there's a question from councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Diane. I remember receiving your email and asking Mr Lehman to act on it. And, and I thank the councillor for bringing this to our attention. And more importantly, I want to thank you for bringing it to the attention of council. Because public safety is really, really important, especially when it comes to our children. Now, can I ask you the question I have to ask before the debate? How long have you been bringing this to the attention of the council or how long has this grieved you?
The, well, I've been bringing the problems with the Sturt Street area for the last six years, maybe. I've been lobbying for the Sturt Street, uh, on the Sturt Street for, um, the corner of Patton Street for a pedestrian crossing, uh, since about two thousand and seventeen. But for this particular intersections, probably in the last six months, yeah.
Good. And, and, and you've been getting, sorry, Miss May, may I ask a follow-up question? Uh, so you've been getting responses from the council and they, they've sort of shown goodwill and said that they're working on the project or?
So, so not on these particular intersections, but on the Sturt Street, yes. I mean, I addressed council about this maybe two years ago to get a pedestrian crossing that took four years in the lead up to lobby to get to that point for that pedestrian crossing on Sturt and Patton to get in. Uh, but these are part, these are actually earmarked on plans already. Like, they're, they're there as part of the cycleway plan. There's supposed to be another one on Botany and Sturt, which I'd love to see going. Because I see my son's colleagues cross there all the time to try and get to the bus stops on Anzac Parade and risk their life. Um, so there's one supposed to be there, one also at the Sturt and, uh, Avoca, and another one. I think there's four in that particular area that are earmarked.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you very much for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? There being no further questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now move to NM eight slash twenty-three, notice of motion from councillor Veach. Protecting the right to peaceful, non-violent protests in New South Wales and the arrest of a UNSW student. Speaking, uh, Cherish Kuhlman.
Thank you for having me today, council, and thanks for, Philippa, for putting the motion forward. Um, as described in the motion, uh, my name is Cherish Kuhlman. I'm the UNSW Student Representative Council Education Officer this year, elected by students to organise around student rights, uh, yeah. And as described in the motion as well, I was arrested, uh, two weeks ago after a peaceful protest against the cost of living crisis and housing justice. New South Wales Police came to my house six hours after the protest, even though they spoke to me at the protest and told me I was free to go. They detained me on a charge of aggravated trespass and I was taken into custody before being released, uh, four hours later at four in the morning. The charge is serious, uh, and carries, uh, the threat of jail time and a very large fine. And I've had strict bail conditions imposed on me as well. Um, the student protest earlier that day rallied outside the Reserve Bank of Australia in Martin Place, uh, demanding immediate measures to ease the housing crisis, such as rent caps, rent freezes, uh, you know, taxes on the massive profits that, you know, corporations are posting right now. Students have always played a role, uh, in protesting for our rights, you know, throughout history. From the Freedom Rides, it was students from University of Sydney who went down to the Illawarra, uh, to the anti-Vietnam War protests. Even more recently, protests organised by the National Union of Students for Marriage Equality and against fee deregulation, uh, by Tony Abbott in two thousand and fourteen. I work within the National Union of Students, uh, to organise student rallies, uh, protests and campaigns that take place within the CBD. So to clarify, my bail conditions mean I cannot enter two kilometres within Sydney Town Hall for as long as my court case is proceeding, which could blow out to a year unless I can contest that in court. I organise campaigns for climate action, International Women's Day, LGBTI riots and other issues that more acutely affect students and young people, including education reform and right now the housing crisis. My role as education officer at UNSW involves working closely with the NUS, um, in New South Wales to organise activities critical to the function of our student union. And these bail conditions severely hamper the work that I'm able to undertake with assisting the NUS, um, campaigns. Uh, and, you know, the student union is therefore not effectively able to advocate for students uh, when elected representatives cannot attend meetings or rallies in the city. My arrest is the latest attack on the right to protest in New South Wales and I think is another intimidation, uh, by the New South Wales Police of activists. As demonstrated by the fact that I wasn't arrested at the protest, but actually in the middle of the night where no one could help me and no media could see, um, in an attempt to intimidate and deter myself and others from protesting in a peaceful manner, specifically, um, to deter me from chairing a housing rally that was for the following Friday, which I missed. I'm being, uh, and I already explained my charges. Um, on December twenty twenty-two, uh, more than two hundred organisations, including the New South Wales Council for Civil Liberties, uh, Unions New South Wales, Australian Conservation Foundation and Oxfam, uh, as well as prominent individuals, united to condemn the recent fifteen-month jail sentence for climate activist Deanna Violet Coco and express concern about increasing repression, including the recent introduction of the new anti-protest laws in multiple states, but specifically New South Wales. Maritime Union of Australia Sydney Branch Secretary Paul Keating pointed out in his union statement, as soon as these laws were passed, it became inevitable that, uh, New South Wales Police would enforce these repressive laws and the judiciary would apply custodial sentences, meaning the state of New South Wales is once again imprisoning people for legitimate forms of protest, a benchmark of authoritarianism. I think my arrest for a peaceful protest is the latest example of this authoritarianism. And the Parrotay Government, um, you know, is increasingly attacking, uh, activism in this state. Uh, I was not even protesting on a road in this case, but, uh, this new legislation has set a precedent for police to feel confident, I think, in carrying out arrests of protesters generally. Protest is a legitimate democratic expression and a fundamental right in Australia. And attacks on democracy need to be publicly opposed. So the anti-protest laws are a threat to anyone, including students like myself, trying to fight for a better world. So I think the council should move to defend the democratic right to protest and condemn the wrongful arrests of activists such as myself.
Thank you. I have a hand up first from councillor D'Souza, then councillor Olive.
Thank you. Thank you, Miss May. Uh, you most probably know all of this, Cherish, but Australia is party to seven core international human rights treaties. And the right to freedom of assembly and association is enshrined in Articles twenty-one and twenty-two. Now, that means the right to protest is there and we've signed a treaty. So you have every right to do what you've done. And you, I mean, there is Article Four later on, which says if some governments can act, if, if things get out of control. So they have a case as well. But in saying that, I admire your courage. I admire your, your desire to, to pursue your, your right of freedom of speech. And I, and I will be supporting you in the, in the notice of motion. Because freedom of speech is so important. Democracy is. The, the question, sorry, the question, the question was, were you aware? Sorry, the question, I started with the question. Were you aware of the right to protest and the right to freedom of speech and the right to protest? I'll leave it at that.
It's just like my student council meetings. Um, yeah, I, I am aware of the right to, uh, protest and assembly. It's actually also enshrined in the constitution as well that we have the right to protest.
Not in our constitution in Australia. I can confirm that because I researched it for you or for me, but in saying that.
Ca- 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 councillor, councillor D'Souza, councillor D'Souza, hold on.
Anyway, I'll leave it at that.
I, I might actually provide this speaker an opportunity to, to answer the question as posed. Um, be- before any follow-ups, this, this speaker's more than welcome to conclude. If you would like to conclude in answering that question.
Sure. Um, well, yeah, I am aware of the right to protest in Australia. And even if that was taken away, which in history it has been, in two thousand and twenty, the police cracked down on student protests against the Job Ready Graduates Package that doubled fees for art students like myself. Um, and we were fined fifty-six thousand dollars, uh, in individual Covid penalty fines. Those fines have since been dropped. So I think, you know, even if you have the right to protest, it's not always guaranteed and it's up to us to defend that democratic right.
Thank you. I had a question from councillor Olive and then a question from councillor Sid.
Uh, thank you very much for coming, Charlie, uh, Chip. And, um, uh, thank you very, very much for, uh, publicising, you know, sort of your particular situation. I think it's very important that, you know, sort of we understand, you know, sort of where, where our rights to protest, you know, sort of lie and, you know, sort of when they're being infringed upon. Do you see that, you know, sort of your, um, your situation as being, you know, arrested in the middle of the night for a peaceful protest in a public place, you know, sort of, as you say, not, not in the road? Is a portent of things to come if, uh, if these laws stand?
Yeah, great question. Um, I've been following very closely the arrest of activists, particularly climate activists in Australia, um, you know, uh, like the Block Eight Australia activists. I was quite shocked, actually, um, at my arrest. I go to hundreds of protests. I've lived in Sydney for three years. I'm originally from Perth. Been to many, many protests, many stunts, um, you know, kind of snap actions, things like that, um, in the city. I'm part of the student activist scene in Sydney. So I was quite shocked to be arrested in the middle of the night, especially after, after the protest happened. Police pulled me aside. I complied, gave them my details, asked, am I being detained? And they said, no. I said, can I leave? And they said, if you provide your ID and address. I did. I know you don't have to do that in New South Wales, actually. You don't have to provide them any information unless they're arresting you. But I complied. So there's no reason why they need to detain me in the middle of the night. They could have sent me a summons for the charge, but instead they chose to take me in the middle of the night where no one could see, the media were not there, um, but they were, while the media were at the protest, um, Channel Seven was there. Um, and I think that is a form of intimidation, as well as the very strict bail conditions they've placed on me. My lawyers tried to get them, uh, police consent to allow me to attend a protest, but they specifically do not want me to attend even protests that are approved with Form Ones, um, and are authorised, so.
Thank you. Councillor Sid.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, Cherish, I'm struggling because I agree with you and I believe in the freedom of protest. But I just can't understand how they've arrested you for protesting on the footpath at the front of the Royal Bank. Now, is that all that happened? Because I'm, I'm not trying to say that you, you know, man, I'm just, I cannot fathom how you get arrested by just standing on the footpath.
Pretty shocked as well. Um, their specific words, um, is that I was on the curtilage of the Reserve Bank of Australia. So the sidewalk that is out the front is deemed Commonwealth property. And that is the, and I have disrupted the flow of business to the Reserve Bank of Australia. Uh, I've single-handedly stopped interest rates increasing apparently, so that is the charge. It sounds pretty crazy. I'm hoping to, that, that holds up in court as well. But that is essentially the nature of the charge.
Councillor Pandefini.
Thanks, Cherish, for coming in. Um, and yeah, I just want to, um, say that I'm so sorry that that has happened because, you know, a lot of people in this room have benefited from, um, you know, peaceful protest that has, um, meant that our lives have been better. Um.
So, so, thank you. I believe, uh, uh, look, look, it is a fair point. However, I believe councillor Pandefini is getting to her question.
How, how did that? Thanks, Danielle. Just asking the question now. Just asking the question now.
Thank you, councillors.
Um, so, um, how did that make you feel being arrested in the night? And, and kind of has that had any ongoing effect, you know, afterwards?
Well, I think, uh, it was intended to scare me and deter me from organising future actions. Uh, but actually, I, I'm just angry. I'm angry really that, um, you know, for peaceful protesting, I've been, uh, singled out by the police. No one else has been, uh, targeted. And they've, what I think is a trumped up charge and very restrictive bail conditions have been placed on me. Um, you know, for simply trying to fight for better rights, uh, and, you know, access to affordable housing for students. So people ask it, was it traumatic? Like, the whole thing is totally unnecessary. I would have liked to have studied properly this term. I've not been able to attend a single class, but more than anything, I'm pretty outraged and determined to keep up the fight.
There is a follow-up question from councillor D'Souza.
Cherish, were you aware you were trespassing on Commonwealth property?
Hmm. I can't really comment because the case is ongoing, but I was just outside in Martin Place.
Thank you, councillors.
Uh, thank you, Cherish, for coming in. Um, I admire your, um, your, uh, fight for freedom of speech. Uh, just a question, do you receive any wages for the protest sort of work you do?
Yes, so I, I can comment, yeah. So I actually receive a honorary payment, uh, because I'm elected by students at the University of New South Wales to be the student education officer. So I receive, um, a couple of hundred buck, like two hundred bucks a week, um, to actually spend part of my week, yeah, organising student activism, yeah.
Thank you. There being councillor Hamilton.
Cherish, have you ever been arrested before or have you ever been in the, um, the, on the radar of the police?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councillors, there being no further questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, councillors. Um, councillors, uh, before I go to the next speaker for NM nine slash twenty three, um, I'd just like to say that this time is eight oh eight. Um, NM nine slash twenty three, uh, notice of motion from councillor Pandefini, Australia Day twenty twenty four Citizenship Ceremony and Staff Arrangements, speaking in favour, Auntie Barbara Sims Keely. Thank you.
Firstly, can I acknowledge country? I would like to see some speakers before for me acknowledge country. It's so important to acknowledge country, it's not hard to do. I'd like to speak for the motion. Citizenship needs to be changed to a day that suits us as First Nations people in this country here. And this is the land of the Bajjigal people. It's not Gadigal country. Our neighbouring clans are Gadigal people and the Gugel people of Kurnell. So I belong to those three clans. Looking at this closely and all ardently in an holistic way, we need to think clearly, be mindful, be respectful, and each councillor that sits here, you are elected by the community. Don't ever forget that. The community gets you here, they put you here. And I sit here tonight in wonder, when people are talking here, how many, how many of yous get up to support the people talking? Very few, and I'm in awe of it. Honestly, it's insulting as a First Nations woman, I see this. And when people do get up and talk, they're shot down. And gentlemen, sir, you can look at me like that with your eyes up and down, I don't mean you. I'm a First Nations woman here and I also demand respect. Yeah, you can do that, sorry. When we look at citizenship, we need to think clearly what it's about. So we need a separate day. And this council really needs to take hold and take grasp of that. I look at our monument at Laperoo's, A four in size, A four, sad and it's truthful. When we look at the French monuments, how many can you fit into it? How many? That same monument, I stood in as a little girl and sang the French National Anthem fluently, made to sing it, not by choice. So for this motion that was put up, I support you with it. Someone taking the guts to do this and being upfront to say, we need change. Yes, we do need change. And it's up to this council leaders say, we'll make change with you. So if the dates are changed and the times are changed, that suits us as a people, as a First Nations people, we need it. I, I went, I lighted right through this paperwork here. It needs to be done in an holistic, meaningful way. If council's going to work with us, we'll work with you. It's got to be a partnership, it's not a one way street. And will, will the broader community be aware of it? We look at Sydney City Council, do they listen, understand and talk to the Bajjigal people? No. So in this community here that Remy Council sits and oversees and overrides within in, walk with us, talk to us, understand where we're coming from, where our journey's going to take us as a people. And if you sit there and you can see this yourselves within that framework and look at it in a cultural space as we do. I look at our elders at Laperoo's, we have some of the oldest sporting women out there, still on country. The oldest Aboriginal woman out there just turned ninety four. And I wonder if she got a letter from council saying, happy birthday to you aunt? I often wonder. We have the oldest men still on country, Aboriginal people. We can boast that, we can go South Tenara, Wollongong, eastern suburbs, ride around Camel Town Liverpool. It's our community that boasts these women and men of, of their age and stature. So I will leave this, so if someone wants to talk to it for me or with me, please do so. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question from councillor Chapel.
Thank you, Auntie Barb, I really appreciate that. Um, we are on Bajjigal land always. Um, I would love to know from you, um, how you would like council to talk about the twenty sixth of January, what the, what the feeling is about Survival Day or Invasion Day and what events we should be thinking about doing on that day?
Changes need to be made in this forum here, in this chamber. Changes need to come here and changes need to happen with each, each individual here. So when you leave this chamber here tonight, I want you to think about it. Where's your mindset? Where's your vision? What do you see as a person? Australia has been welcoming new Australians here for how long now? Myself, I've been a citizen in Australia for fifty seven years, sad. Our history is over sixty to seventy thousand years plus as a people in Australia. I was taken away as an eight year old girl, stolen generations. I do know separation, I know the wants and needs, the love of my mother. When we see all these things, we need to say, counter sin, be a partner with us. So if you're voting with your heart, you have a conscious, conscience, think about it. What's it mean to us when we become citizens, what, fifty seven years ago? And a referendum was taken to counter sin, we were flora and fauna. You either picked us or we eat on us either way. So we were nothing as a people, human. We have feelings, we have emotions, we have a history so deep as the oldest continuum culture in the world. We want total inclusion, not half ardently, we want it. We want to be recognised as a people. We have a lot to give, a lot to offer, we contribute as well. And this whole history of council here, never once as an Aboriginal man or woman sat here in its history. It was this very council here, not yourselves here tonight, that wanted to remove the blacks from Laperoo's. We were dirty, diseased, no good. How far we, how far we come as a people to where we were. So the gallery, if you're not aware of that, it is true. This very council wanted to get rid of us from Laperoo's, the eyesore blacks out there. I'm one of those eyesore blacks. My father was born on the first mission at Laperoo's, delivered by an Aboriginal midwife. My brother, born on the second mission, delivered by an Aboriginal midwife. My niece, we have a stronghold in Laperoo's as a people, without connections going to Kurnell. I was born on Gadigal land in nineteen forty eight. I turned seventy five over a week ago. I'm a part of the fabric, I'm a part of the landscape. My people that are out of Laperoo's, they are peoples of the landscape. So if you're voting with a conscience and your art is there, think about it. We need change and, and change can only happen if we all work together with it. So I can work, walk with you, I can work with you, I can work against you. Choice is mine, choice is yours. So take it on board and listen what I'm saying to you. Thank you.
Thank you. A question from councillor Veach and then councillor D'Souza.
Uh, look, thank you, Auntie Barbara for coming in. It's, your speech has been very moving. Um, look, you have just been so generous over the years to council and to many of us personally for sharing your, uh, deep knowledge and culture, uh, and your just kindness. And if, I feel it would just be a very small gesture for council to change this date, um, uh, in comparison to what you have given to us. But I'm just wondering if you could say what that would mean to you, uh, if we were to do that tonight?
What it would mean to me as an Aboriginal woman, it'd mean the world to me. It may seem very little to an non Aboriginal person, but to Aboriginal people that is still here and fighting for justice, equality, equity, it's been a long time. Like I said, we have the oldest Aboriginal man and woman, still on country out there. What's it mean to them when they've had to fight for basic human rights to be accepted, to be who they are today? We've had people first in shops, last served. So these things hurt. Our lives matter, all lives matter, who's in here tonight? All our lives matter. You talked about crossing before, children's lives matter at crossings. Our lives matter in the wellbeing. They matter with everyday living life, every hour of the day, they matter. I have respect for you, I'll respect for you. I want the same shown back to me and to my people who I talk to and talk with. Some don't have a voice and we ought to lend a voice to them, to make them heard. So while you sit on council, elected councillors, you're there to serve the community and serve the community in a just way. Otherwise, it's, it's just ridiculous going to a parliament to be voted with. Aboriginal people and non Aboriginal people vote for years to, to support communities in every endeavour, in every field that they go through. When they bring these papers here, you're there to support them or talk against the motion or talk for the motion. So that's what life is about. It's not art, it's, it's not art. It's not Rockefeller sign when you think of it all. So you either vote with your art, with conscience, or vote against it. But remember, we are still going to be a voice, we're still going to be the adjutators, agitators, and I for one will be those, you know I do it. But we've got to be reasonable and sensible because I tell you what's going to happen. November, you'll see the biggest truth telling day at Kurnell. Australia will be awakened for the truth telling day. We've got the voice coming up now. We need a treaty. A treaty will carry more weight than a voice. So we need to think with our hearts there as well. So this paper here, think about it, changed the day of citizenship where Aboriginal people feel counted in again and they are a people. They are a just people, the oldest people in Australia we are to the world. So think about it and vote with your art and have that conscious little insight in, in you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Before I go to councillor D'Souza with the question, um, I'd just like to remind councillors to be succinct in your questions, please. Thank you, councillor D'Souza, feel free.
Auntie Barbara, twenty sixth of January, the date. I think you made it clear how you feel about it. So the name, Australia Day, does that sort of have unfavorable connotations? Would you, if, if there was just a name change?
How does it resonate with me, Noel? How does it resonate? I would like to see that the, the name changed.
Well, what if you had a, what do you consider a name? What reconciliation day?
I'd have to talk to the elders, I reckon, uh, what have we got to reconcile? We don't have anything to reconcile with. It's you people out here, you need to reconcile. You need to look at yourselves. Okay, the injustices, our men, not you people did it, our men chained by the neck, with chains and bolts on, our women raped and pillaged. So how do we move forward? By having that conscience with you and change the date to a different date. When citizenship, like I said, citizen, citizen, coming to Australia, they get off the boats, get off the planes, they come to a free country, no tanks rolling down the streets, none of that like we do in other countries. And they, they're included, they fit in, they go to the schools, they get jobs in employment, they fit in. We are still a second class citizen in our own country and will forever be that until things changed.
Thank you, and I'll be addressing that when I speak.
Yes.
Thank you. There being no further questions, um, we'll now move to, uh, NM one slash twenty three, uh, notice of motion from councillor D'Souza titled investigating establishing a truth and reconciliation group, um, if you'd like to speak to that. Thank you. A reminder that there are four minutes.
Thank you.
As it relates to that, and councillors, if you could keep your questions as brief as possible. Thank you. The floor is yours, Auntie Barb.
Yep. Noel, I'm supporting you. Yeah, I, I would support you, all arty, what, all ardently what you're doing. Yeah, um, you're talking about the voice. Can, please enlighten me.
Uh, ca- councillor D'Souza, if you'd like to clarify for this speaker on the...
I don't have no paperwork on it.
Right, Auntie, so my thing is to have the truth and reconciliation group so we can discuss both sides, tell the truths that have occurred. So I guess what I'd like to speak, how do you feel a group of this kind will help build bridges and, and heal the hurt? That's what I like.
If it's meaningful, if it's meaningful, done in a compassionate way, yes. Not lip service. Think again what it is, what you're doing, how you're doing it. Um, my conscience is clear, like I said earlier, I don't have anything to reconcile with. I want to see what Australia, you'll have a black history. So think where you are today, where you're going tomorrow with this. And we're looking at the voice as well, so it's going to be a big issue, contentious issue right across Australia. Who's the ones affected by it? We are. We're the ones sitting at the back on the back burner, we are there. So they're going to decide issues that are going to infiltrate our life. So how do we see it?
Thank you. I have a question from councillor Hamilton.
Thank you, Auntie Barb. I just, just reflecting on the comments, um, that you made in the, against the first motion versus this one, what councillor D'Souza's asking is if you would like to investigate establishing a truth and reconci- reconciliation group. But I was just wondering, would you like it to be called something else considering that reconciliation you've pointed out is something that we should be doing rather than you should have to do?
Well, you can look at a working group, but this is something councils should have done a long time ago, not wait till now. So in councils' existence, I don't know how long you've been councillors from the last election, and I've got to say, I campaigned with a lot of yous when I stood as an independent. I wish you every success. But this council should have addressed this a long time ago. It's just come up now because we've got the voice going through. Noel, I commend you for your convictions with it and having the gumption to even talk about it. So councils need to sit down and really talk about it. We can talk to elders out at Laperoo's or just around the community about a name change that would suit everybody. That's meaningful and respectful. We've got to look at this. So the man that done the welcome tonight, he welcomed you onto Gadigal land. It's not Gadigal land. So I'm sitting over there, I felt totally insulted. Then I heard every speaker come up here, not one person acknowledged country. How does it make you feel? So it's not, it's so, there's reflection back on you again. So it, for me, as a woman, as an Indigenous First Nations woman, I feel this council should have done something a long time ago. And if you can sit down, put pen to paper, put your hair, listening to what's going on around the place here, so many issues that are contentious.
Thank you. There being no further speakers. Um, before we move, uh, down, oh, there's a question from councillor Veach, so... Sorry, sorry, um, Auntie Barb, I actually have one further question from... Oh, sorry, just hold on, ca- councillor Veach, could you please just pose your question?
Not actually a question, I wanted to ask if we can, I'd like to move a procedural motion that we, uh, debate the items where the speakers were present tonight, uh, first.
Okay, we have a procedural motion, uh, to reorder the business paper to go via, uh, the list of speakers. Um, it being a procedural motion, um, we will go straight to a vote. Um, all those in favour of reordering the business paper in line, uh, with the list of speakers, please re, uh, say aye. All those against? I declare that lost. Okay, thank you. Um, for those who are listening, the audience, um, what we will now do is we will run through the agenda as it is listed on the business paper. Uh, the supplementary merril minute will, uh, occur, um, in the list of merril minutes, um, which, which are there, uh, and we will then run down, um, through the list. Um, for those who are waiting for particular notices of motion, uh, the advice I would give to you is it may be some hours for, uh, the mayor, for the notices of motion which were, were debated. That, yep, that's, that's fine, if, if, if you'd like the, the meeting. Sorry, I have a ha- a question from councillor, uh, Nielsen.
Ma'am, I, I just thought it would be useful to remind the members of the gallery that they choose to go home, they can listen online.
That, that, that is a good suggestion. Um, for members of the public, if you do choose to leave, um, tonight's meeting is recorded with the exception of the confidential items, uh, and you do have the ability, if you so wish, to, um, uh, listen online. We will now go through...
Can we have a five minute break?
Uh, yes, the, well, um... Okay. Wha- wha- what I might do, just as there are people which are moving and everything like that, we might have a, uh, five minute break, uh, uh, just for a German to do a toilet break. Uh, when we do return, what I would ask is that we promptly move through the agenda. Thank you. Who are we waiting? Councillors, thank you. Yep, thank you, councillors. The ordinary council meeting of Randwick Council returned at eight thirty seven PM. Please be seated. Thank you. We will now move to merril minutes. The first merril minute. We'll move to is MM seven twenty three. The motion of condolence for former alderman Ms. Marita Berg. As I mentioned at the beginning of, of the council meeting, Randwick Council sends. Its condolences on behalf of former alderman and Randwick City councillor Berg. Who sadly passed on the sixteenth of February twenty twenty three at ninety three years young. As was previously raised, she was a Randwick City alderman and councillor, serving from nineteen eighty to nineteen eighty three. She was cremated on the twenty third of February and a small family gathering was held at the Yarra Bay Sailing Club. Surrounded by the closest to her, raised a glass in her honour and council sent flowers and a. Message of condolence as well. With that, I commend the merril minute. Do I have any speakers? Speaking for councillor Sid.
And I'd just like to highlight to the councillors that Marita. Like all of us, put a lot of time into being a councillor, in those days an alderman obviously. And did it with a lot of the plume and did it for the South Ward and with people like John Ford and Bill Hay. And then also working for Jeanette McHugh. So she really did put a lot of time and effort into her ward. She'd put a lot of time and effort into Randwick and I appreciate that she was a loyal and upstirving Labour councillor. And I'd also like to pay my condolences to Scott Fraser. And I'd also, at the same time, you mentioned that the passing of Wally. I don't know if many people here realise, but he was the president of the Malabar precinct for a very long time. He also was an avid member of Malabar ASL. He also attended nearly every citizenship there was for the last ten years till unfortunately Covid stopped that. But yeah, so really sad to be, I didn't know anything about it, so I'd like to pay my condolences to his family as well.
Thank you. Councillor D'Souza.
Mr. Mayor, sadly I didn't know the person, but I know all about service, commitment and dedication and it appears. That's exactly what this councillor did and offered. And being a member of the Labour Party, I'm sure she was true to her core beliefs of equity. Social justice and a fair go for all. Keeping those core values in mind, I'm sure she served her community well and I. I offer my sympathy to her daughter and to Scott over there. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Rosenfeld.
I was just going to move a procedural motion that in, given that we're getting quite late and there's a large agenda, if we can limit speeches to two minutes.
Thank you. There being a procedural motion, I'm obliged to the code of meeting practice to put it. All those in favour, sorry, thank you. No, no. Okay, what I do think we will do is councillor Rosenfeld, if you could just withdraw the procedural motion for the moment.
I'll withdraw it. I actually thought we'd finished the condolence motion.
Thank you, thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I will now put the merril minute. All those in favour? All those against? I declare that unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you. Councillor Rosenfeld.
Can I put the procedural motion? And look, I did think we were through the, apologies, I made a mistake. I am human, hello. And, and can we limit the speeches to two minutes? Thanks.
Thank you. There being a procedural motion, I will now put it. All those in favour? All those against? I'm going to have to call a division on that. Okay, yep, okay. Thank you. There is a procedural motion moved by councillor Rosenfeld, that all speeches of council be limited to two minutes. There's been a call for a division. All those in favour of the procedural motion to limit speaking times, please raise your hand. Okay, councillor Hamilton, okay, in favour. I have councillor Hay, councillor Luxford, councillor Rosenfeld. Councillor McCafferty, councillor Wilson, councillor Sid, councillor Burst and the mayor. Okay, thank you. All those against? Okay, we have councillor Pandefini, Nielsen, Veach, Chapel, Olive and D'Souza. I declare the procedural motion carried. Thank you. That sounds fine by me. Okay, we now go down the list of merril minutes, MM two slash twenty two, twenty three, financial assistance and donations. Dear councillors, I take the merril minute as read and commend the merril minute to the floor. Are there any speakers? There is a question from councillor Pandefini, sorry, councillor Pandefini is the speaker. Councillor Pandefini.
Thanks, Dylan. I just wanted to, I discussed this with you earlier. I just wanted to raise one of these donation amounts. And that is for, what page is it? Can you just help me out here? Oh, no, I know. Okay, but no, the donations are listed, yes, okay. So for the fundraising art exhibition, which you've nominated the amount of four hundred dollars. And I wondered why it was so low.
Councillor Pandefini, the consideration of that donation is it was put to me by a councillor, following on from a request for a donation. Not having involvement with Sir Optimus, I suggested a figure and confirmed with them whether or not that would be an appropriate amount. However, councillor Pandefini, if you'd like to suggest an alternative amount, I'm happy to move it in an amended fashion so long as it's reasonable.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to point out, you know, I know that there's, I remember Bill and Noel kind of, you know, talking about how important, you know. Support for women and against violence and, you know, this is a very, very worthy cause. And the four hundred today is a hundred dollars or something. So I would like to nominate it that it's raised to the amount of seven fifty. Which is more in line with the rest of the kind of, you know, minimal donations in this.
Totally fine. So I move in an amended fashion to change to the amount to seven hundred and fifty dollars. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Sid. Yes, councillor Sid.
What is this, Sir Optimus? I'm not being, I just don't know. Oh, sorry, okay, sorry, okay, sorry.
Very recently, when we used to have citizenship ceremonies down here in the town hall. And there used to be a cup of tea before, offered by the community group, was always the Sir Optimists. Who are the ones who provided that and they've always been part of the welcoming new citizens to our community and so on. But they do a huge amount of community work and this is their major fundraiser.
Thank you. All right, there being councillor Burst.
I'd just like to second Pandefini's increase to seven fifty. I certainly support that.
It's incorporated into the merriment, so that's, that's fine. There being no further speakers, and I'll put it, all those in favour, all those against, declare that carried. Thank you very much. MM three slash twenty three Greek Epiphany Festival twenty twenty three, waiving of fees. Councillors, I take it that the merril minute has been read and commend the merril minute to the floor. I have a hand up from councillor Chapel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's kind of a question and potentially a proposed amendment to this, which is just to say. This is obviously an annual event, so the fact that we're approving it outside of, like, in retrospect is. I would think unusual. But what I wanted to say is, could this be added going forward to our calendar of events and our schedule so that we. Are looking at this when we look at all of our other events and where our funding is going and which communities we're looking after.
Councillor Chapel, look, I think that is a very reasonable point to raise. And is part of the intention behind this particular merriment. From my understanding, Randwick Council has been supporting in some shape or form this event down at Yarra Bay. For approximately thirty years. The intention of this merril minute is to waive the fees which are associated with this particular event. Some of the additional cost has actually been incurred because of measures which council has required upon the organisers in recent years. To draw your attention to. The last paragraph before source of funding, given that this festival has become a high profile and popular annual community event. Is recommended that council support the waiving of associate fees on an annual ongoing basis. And then the identification be from the community donations budget. So rather than it being dealt with on an ad hoc basis. It's through the contingency fund, it's moved into a separate allocation. Are there any further questions or comments? Yep, councillor Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question. I know that you, we did discuss that the additional expenses have been incurred. Due to our own restrictions around safety and event planning. Is it much of a difference though? I can't remember what it was last time.
What I may do from, from my understanding. I'm happy to throw that to council staff. I actually did ask this query as well because when it was raised with me, I think it's about four or five. But you also have to account for the fact that Covid did interrupt several years. Yep. I think councillor, director of city services.
Thank you, three Mister Mayor. I'll be able to take that question on notice and get you the exact, um, differential.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. M M four slash twenty three, funding for Trove Australian National Database. Uh, councillors, um, I take the mayoral minute as read. Um, this has come, uh, to me, uh, via our, um, library team, uh, and I'm more than happy to present it to the council on their suggestion. I commend the mayoral minute. There being no further speakers, and I put it, all those in favour. All those against, declare that carried and unanimous. Uh, M M five slash twenty three, recognising Greek Independence Day twenty twenty three. Uh, councillors, yep, councillors, I take the mayoral minute as read, uh, and commend it to the floor. I have a hand up from councillor Olive. Councillor Olive.
Yes, uh, I'd just like to make an amendment if I could to that, please. Um, um, Mister Kelly, if he could bring that up. I've, uh, rewritten the, um, the mayoral minute just because it, it was quite complicated, but I'll read it, I'll read it out. Um, that, uh, the council fly the Harmony Day flag on March twenty one, uh, two thousand and twenty three to celebrate multicultural Australia. Uh, produce content for council's social media channels and e-news to mark Harmony Day. Right to prominent leaders in the Greek community, including the Archbishop and local clergy and the Consul General of Greece, acknowledging the contribution made by the large Greek community in Randwick City, and waive the fees associated with the Greek festival, the Sydney event, being held at the Prince Henry Centre on fifth March two thousand and twenty three, totaling one thousand six hundred and eighty dollars, to be funded from the two thousand and twenty two, twenty three contingency fund.
Um, before you speak to your amendment, councillor Olive, can I just confirm? Are points A and B in substitute of the points A in B in the motion or in addition to?
Uh, substitution.
Substitution of, I do not accept the amendment. Um, councillor Olive, please continue.
Okay, um, yeah, the Randwick City Council makes significant financial and in-kind contributions to many different community and cultural groups. We give over seventy thousand dollars annually for the Greek Epiphany Celebration, celebrate Lunar New Year, give significant contributions to the Jewish Film Festival and support countless other smaller events throughout the calendar year. And I totally endorse this. We also fly the Aboriginal flag to represent the sovereignty of First Nations over these lands, the Australian flag as a recognised national symbol, and the progress pride flag to signify inclusion. These flags say things about our whole community. However, council flying a particular national flag in the absence of all others from our multicultural community runs the risk of becoming sectarian, and I would like to avoid this possibility. As a solution, and given that it may not be feasible for council to fly the national flag of every culture represented in the L G A on their special day, I am propos- proposing we instead fly the harmony flag on March twenty one, twen- twenty twenty three to celebrate multiculturalism and the contribution of all communities and cultures to Australia. I therefore implore you to support the, that, support the amendment.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Panda Feeny.
Thanks, Michael. Yeah, I just, I guess I wanted to, um, add, you know, I'm Italian and half Italian and half Irish. And if we look at the top, uh, res- responses from our L G A on cultural diversity, we have the Irish, the Scottish, the Chinese, the Irish, that they're the top numbers of people in the community. So I'm just wondering, um, are we setting a precedent? Will we also be, um, able to fly the flags of every single, you know, culture? Um, I'm pretty sure there is sim- similar amount of Italians in, in the community. So I just, you know, I just wanted to, um, support, uh, Michael's amendments. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Councillor D'Souza.
Mister Mayor, I'm all for harmony and diversity and all these things that are so important to many of us. But Greece has a special place in my heart. Only because that is the ball, the centre of democracy. That's where a lot of our beliefs, we talked about freedom of speech. We think of Athens and we think of that famous road with the black and white pebbles that went in, the decision that was made at that first election. So when we celebrate Greek Independence Day, it's not just a country or a culture we'll be celebrating. We're actually celebrating our own Judeo-Christian beliefs or our beliefs on democracy. So it is important. I'm Indian, I should say, let's celebrate Indian Independence Day. Of course, the demographics of this area are changing. Greeks played an important role as a community to build Randwick City. But I look at it, I look at it from a bigger point of view. This is not just a celebration of Greek Independence Day. It's a celebration of democracy, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, councillor D'Souza. Councillor Sid.
Mister Mayor, I actually totally agree with, uh, councillor, but I actually don't understand why we just don't have both. Uh, twenty first of March, it's a different date to twenty fifth. So we could actually just have Harmony Day, which is a fantastic thing for all the, for all multicultural races within our L G A. And we could put it on many channels and all the rest of it, which is fantastic. And I think we, do we have the races stop see flag signs yet? They're coming at some stage. Um, so we're doing everything we can to promote harmony. But at the same time, we are gonna spend the money, so if we're gonna spend the money, putting the flag doesn't really come into it. So if you don't mind, if we just left, um, the original and just add yours as maybe E and F. I don't think there's any problem. I think it'll be accepted and we'll go straight through.
I, I'm happy to incorporate those. It's, 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 my only objection is either or.
To the, in addition.
I, I, I don't, I don't wish to incorporate.
Thank you. Um, are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, we'll now put the mayoral minute. All those, oh, sorry, we'll now put the amendment, we'll now put the amendment. Uh, to amend A and B to insert the flying of the Harmony Day, uh, flag on the twenty first of March and B to produce content for social media channels and e-news to mark Harmony Day, uh, in substitute of A and B. Uh, all those in favour of the amendment? Okay, all those against? I declare the amendment lost. Okay, thank you. We now, uh, return back to the debate on the mayoral minute. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Uh, we now move to M M six slash twenty three, renewed concerns regarding Meritons' proposal for Little Bay Cove development. Uh, councillors, I will be moving this in an amended fashion. Uh, point A remains the same, point B remains the same, point C remains the same, point D remains the same. I apologize to Mister Kelly, I actually haven't forwarded it to him, um, but I will, uh, read out a point E, uh, which is reaffirms council's commitment, uh, to the changes contained within the Randwick Comprehensive Planning Proposal twenty twenty two, rendering unnecessary the need for Meritons' proposal to meet our housing need.
And Mister Mayor, you're correct.
Thank you. There is also a typo contained in the subject. Uh, thank you to be corrected, uh, in the minutes. Um, councillors, uh, the additional point E, uh, has been contained, uh, has been, uh, drafted in consultation with the Save Little Bay Group, uh, on their suggestion. Um, I take it that you have, uh, read the mayoral minute, uh, as well as the various councillor bulletins contained, uh, within, uh, outlining, uh, this particular mayoral minute. I commend the mayoral minute to the meeting. Are there any speakers? There is a speaker from councillor Rosenfeld.
Okay, I was just gonna read out, um, something I got from the, uh, the, uh, the minister's office, uh, the minister for planning, uh, recently. Uh, department secretary will determine which proposals will be state assessed based on recommendations from an assessment panel of department staff, an independent panel member and, and a probity advisor. If selected, the planning proposals will be subject to the same strict assessment requirements as any other proposal, which would include consultation with councils and community feedback. In line with the Environmental Planning and Assessment Act, selected planning proposals will either be determined, uh, by the minister for planning or department as his delegate. As part of the selection process, the department will be inviting subject matter experts of councils to provide early technical information on eligible projects. As a probity measure, given the sensitive and confidential nature of some of the information, and because these are only applications rather than formal planning proposals, these experts will need to sign conflict of interest and confidentiality deeds, should they wish to view any project information and provide input. The early engagement is not mandatory and councils will be able to provide input as part of the usual planning proposal process. The industry nomination pilot process has been designed in lockstep with independent probity advisors is being conducted in accordance with strict probity provisions. If it's too, I, I'm happy to stop. Happy to stop? Happy to stop, yeah?
Sounds, sent, look, it sounds like he's coming very close. Please let me hear you and wrap up your remarks.
And the department privately sought advice from New South Wales Independent Commission against corruption to ensure the process safeguards against corruption risks. That's it.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? I, well, okay, I have a hand up from councillor Hamilton, then councillor Nielsen. Councillor Hamilton.
Thanks, Mister Mayor. I, I'd like to move an amendment. I, I agree with, with everything here. I'm really proud that I was on, on the, um, city essence and city planning paddle that, um, deliberated on this and the panel decided that the rezoning that we're discussing here was not appropriate for the area, so in, of course, then blocking, um, overdevelopment down Little Bay. Um, what I'd like to say is that of this mo- uh, motion, I would like to remove B. Uh, that's because, and the reason is because it note the inappropriate confidentiality requirements. When they're talking about probity and a probity measure, I don't believe that confidentiality and probity are mutually exclusive. I think that it, uh, considering it's a, the, uh, New South Wales government, um, and anyone who's running the state is entitled to ensure probity is followed to the T. So I think that B just really is unnecessary, given that everything else that's in here is quite, uh, effective. And I believe it does truly, um, depict the message that we're trying to convey onto them.
Uh, than- thank you very much. Um, I do not, uh, accept the proposed amendment. Um, uh, and, um, uh, councillor Hamilton, do you have a second up? Seconded by councillor Burst. Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor Hamilton, did you have any further remarks on the amendment? No, thank you. Councillor Burst is the second up. Thank you. Um, just before we move to the further debate on the, uh, amendment, um, I might ask the, uh, acting general manager to please clarify for the meeting the advice provided by local government New South Wales in relation to the confidentiality agreements, please.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, the, the advice from local government New South Wales to councils was not to uh, enter into the confidentiality agreements. Um, in their view, they were not appropriate, um, to have that level of confidentiality for these types of application, which are matters that are ordinarily, uh, on the public record in terms of the nature of the proposal, the land upon which it is proposed and the, and the applicants for the development.
Thank you. Now, uh, I assume there's a follow-up question? Yep, councillor Hamilton.
Uh, actually, what I was going to, um, comment is that instead of note the inappropriate confidentiality, or sorry, instead of removing B altogether, given the, um, the information that we've just been shared by the acting general manager, could we note the confidentiality requirements for council? And could we make a statement within that point B that we have decided not to follow the recommendation? That, I think that would make a much better statement, um, to the people concerned.
Note the unip- okay.
I would just say, I, I agree with the point that councillor Hamilton is making, but I don't think the wording is quite correct. And I'm not sure whether, um,
Yep.
the acting ta- um, head of town planning or the acting general manager could, um,
Could, 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 could I? Could, could I suggest a compromised form of wording, uh, which is that point B reads and as follows. Notes the confidentiality requirements for council to be provided the details of the application or to be able to provide technical comments, including comments on the merits of the fast-tracking of the proposal. Full stop. Uh. Acknowledges, okay, acknowledges the comments of local government New South Wales that the confidentiality requirements, as proposed, in their view, uh, represent an inappropriate imposition on councils. Are you happy with that, councillor Hamilton?
I don't think it's inappropriate. I think we use, I believe that we should be, um, you know, batting back in a much more intelligent way. We don't need to say inappropriate. It's something that they brought in for probing, so they believe that it is appropriate. Um, so, but I, I think everything el- else is fine, I do. I think that it, um, truly reflects our position and that's what we should be saying, not just that we note something's inappropriate, we should be reflecting.
Councillor Hamilton, what about acknowledges the comments of local government New South Wales in regards to the confidentiality requirements? Full stop.
Yeah, I think that's perfect.
I accept the amendment and incorporate it in. Um, count, Mister.
Mister Mayor, what about inappropriate though remaining?
It's contained within the advice. I think the substance is the same. Uh. No, I, I understand. I have a hand up from councillor Veach.
Thank you. Look, I actually prefer the, um, motion as, as it was put in the original, and if we are going to, if you are going to move it in this manner, I would say perhaps change acknowledges to support.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't think I, I personally would be breaking any confidentiality as a member of local, or on the board of local government New South Wales who was present at that meeting and received the briefing, that this was, uh, wholeheartedly rejected by every member of that board, which comprises, uh, Liberals, Nationals, Independents, Labour, Greens. No one supported it. Uh, and so I think we should say we should, we should support this. That, that, that was unanimously, unanimously rejected by the Board of Local Government, New South Wales. Oh, why don't we, I would just respectfully, uh, ask the general ma- the, the, the mayor if you would perhaps change supports the comments of local government, New South Wales, which seems, yes, I am, which is more in line with your original, uh, point B.
So, so can I just confirm, so rather than, uh, and in support, and so, and supports the comments of local gov- government, New South Wales? Yep, that's fine. Please remove acknowledges. Uh, that's fine, thank you. Um, are there any further speakers? Yep. I don't think it does. Um, thank you. Uh, councillor Burst.
Um, the wording there, proposal, fast-tracking the proposal, it's actually fast-tracking the initial application. Cause that's the first point that, that happens in, where, where it's behind closed doors is the, is initial application, and then that goes to a second point where it goes to a formal planning proposal. So that proposal should be further down because it doesn't happen straight away. The first, when, uh, when someone applies, they apply for an application that, um, that happens, and then the second stage is a formal planning proposal, which then council can play a part in. So to say the merits of fast-tracking the proposal, it's the merits of fast-tracking the application first, and once the application has been supported by the de- departmental secretary or environmental planning, then like the next stage is going to a formal planning proposal. So we've got to be careful of the wording there because that's not factually correct.
Thank you, councillor Burst. I, I don't support any change further. Um, are there any further speakers? Councillor Nielsen.
My comment is not in relation to point B. Um, yeah, sure. My, uh, comment is in relation to point E. I'm just, I, I think the wording could be better, but because, um, I haven't had time to put enough, uh, thought into it in terms of how I would finesse it better. Um, we're saying here reaffirms its commitment to the changes contained in the Randwick Comprehensive Planning Proposal twenty twenty two, rendering redundant the need for Meritons' proposal. It's just a little bit, um, clunky and need to know too much. Exactly, and I was just wondering whether through one of our council officers, um, they could, without adding too many words, just add those extra clarifying words that make it easier for anybody who's in the future, looking at what we actually meant.
Thank you. Um, I, I think there is a further suggestion from councillor Sid.
Actually, listen, councillor Nielsen, I, I agree with you, and I think just to put, to make it, uh, a little bit stronger is that somehow in there you go, we go back to rendering redundant the Meritons' proposal and going, returning to the original master plan, which was approved in two thousand and nineteen or se- two thousand and seventeen. And that's it. Go back to the original, confirm the original master plan. Which has been the, the fight about Little Bay since the beginning. Which has been the, the fight about Little Bay since the beginning.
Seventeen, it was confirmed in the Randwick Gally P twenty twelve. Which was following a decision which was made prior to that. Twenty seventeen, I, from my understanding, notes the date in which Meriton purchased the site, is that correct? Yeah, it's, it's, so sorry, I was just, yeah. So reaffirms consent rank, okay, uh, no, just, just, just hold on.
You'll just suggest that, um, we hold off on, um, finalizing, um, point E. To allow the council officers to just double check the dates, and I'm sure during the course of the meeting, we will be able to finesse that.
I, I agree, what I might actually do, just for the benefits to proceed through the, through the, no, what I'm actually going to do is ask for a procedural motion. Uh, to defer consideration of this merrill minute until later in the meeting, i- if possible. Um, moved councillor Chapel, uh, seconded councillor Rosenfeld, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, thank you very much, for those who are listening, uh, at home. Uh, consideration of this will be later in the agenda, um, it is my view that it will probably be the last item. In regards to notices of motion, which may be in some time, so you may want to listen to the recording at a later date, if you are in fact listening. Um, we will now move down to, uh, the next item. Uh, which is urgent business, uh, is there, no, uh, so I'll go to urgent business, then I'll go to petitions. Is there any urgent business? Thank you.
Um, yes, I've sent this through to Mister David Kelly. Um, if you're able to, Mister Kelly's able to. Bring up the urgent business. Um, councillors, this is kind of, uh, a fairly localised, uh, matter. Uh, it relates to some, uh, residents, uh, in McGill Street, in Randwick next to the hospital. Um, they live on the corner of McGill Street and Hospital Road, which is now essentially the, one of the entryways to the hospital. So I've been in contact with these residents since, actually I started campaigning in late twenty seventeen, uh, when I was running for, for election. Uh, when the neighbouring residents in Yurimblo Avenue, uh, were, you know, told that their houses were going to be demolished. Uh, McGill Street, uh, is still there, or half of it, that one side is still there. Uh, but they've sort of seen McGill, you know, the other side of their street demolished, Yurimblo Avenue go, they've been living on a construct next to a major. Construction site, uh, and they're now going to be living opposite a hospital entryway, please. Actually, this is quite important to these local residents, I'd really appreciate if you could let me, uh, give the background councillor Hamilton.
It's, it's, councillor Hamilton, I think councillor Veach is outlining why it is urgent in her view. Councillor Veach, please continue, the, the council will be heard in silence, thank you.
So, this is one of the last steps, a, a boom gate is being constructed at the end of the street. Um, to sort of stop traffic, that's been on the cards for a long time. Uh, they're very concerned because it's going in front of their house, uh, uh, Mister Lehman very kindly, uh, at very short notice. Uh, went and met with them, uh, this week, and I really, uh, appreciate that, but I, you know, there's been some letters come through. Uh, I rang them late this afternoon and they're still concerned, and so all I'm asking is that the, the boom gate's due to be installed on Friday. And so the reason I'm bringing it up is that they would just like, I'm just asking for it to be delayed, council I believe is the owner of the footpath. So without our permission, health infrastructure cannot, uh, build it, so it's just calling for a delay so we can have another conversation. And try and get this issue resolved, I'd really appreciate your support.
Thank you councillors, um, it being a request for urgent business. Um, we require, um, a resolution of council in order to consider it. Um, all those in favour of considering this as urgent business? All those against? Okay, declare the urgent business carried, um, I also consider the matter urgent business councillor. Uh, councillor Veach, please, uh, move, uh, your, uh, motion. And please, could you please outline clearly to, uh, the council what it is that you're moving?
Yeah, so it's essentially, um, up here, I don't know if everyone can read it, it's thanking staff for meeting with the residents of fifteen McGill Street earlier this week. And asking council to make representations to health infrastructure. And delay the slated installation this Friday of a boom gate outside number fifteen McGill Street. Simply to allow further discussions with the residents of that property who still have concerns about the impact of the boom gate on their amenity. It, it has been very tricky, it's no criticism of, of the staff involved. It, it has been quite tricky and they've made efforts, but the residents are still, uh, quite concerned. And so I'm just asking if we can delay that installation, council as I believe, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong. The owner of the, uh, footpath on which it's been constructed, uh, essentially has power to, um. Delay the consent of this, albeit at the last minute.
Thank you councillor Luxford is the second up.
Yeah, just briefly, I too have been in contact with these residents, I was under the impression that today it had been remedied. But councillor Veach says there's still an issue, so I'm happy to support this in order to sort that issue out.
Thank you, are there any further speakers, councillor Sid?
Quick question, would, do you mind if I look at this and take?
Can, can I ask you the questions too?
To the.
Councillor Veach, the move of the motion.
At the moment, there's something there, isn't it, because, is it a permanent, um, fence? So it's, that's going away and then a boom gate goes in. So the boom gate's a lot bigger than what's there now, because isn't there already a fence across the, it's a no through road at the moment, yeah?
Thank you, are there any further speakers, there being no further speakers, councillor Veach, you don't need to close the debate, okay, all those in favour?
Aye.
All those against, declare that carried, thank you, uh, we now move to petitions, councillor Hay.
Um, look, I, 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 I won't take up too much of everyone's time, um, I've gone door to door. So, it's a lovely time, yes, uh, I'm, I'm proud to, uh, have consulted many residents in West Kensington. They're very concerned about the development of approximately a thousand, uh, dwellings in the old Sutton's Holden site. Uh, particularly reaffirming the need to do a traffic study in the local area. Uh, there will be a significant impact on local roads, uh, we need to analyse public transport and, uh, making sure there is not suitable parking on site. I'd like to also add that there is a significant issue with rat runs, uh, going particularly along Virginia and Baker Street. To avoid traffic on Lenthel, and also that there was significant support, uh, for a zebra crossing. At the intersection of, uh, Virginia and Lenthel. Uh, so I would like the, uh, council to, to consider that during a traffic study, thanks very much, and I'll hand this to the mayor.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hay, um, there being, uh, no debate on a petition, we now move to the next. Item of business where we will, uh, go, uh, through the agenda items in seriatum. Uh, councillors, as I'm looking down, please call out if you wish to challenge an item. Uh, my strong advice is, um, only challenge an item if you really need to, uh, thank, thank you. Um, we will go GM one slash twenty three quarterly progress report, October to December twenty twenty two. No challenge, GM two slash twenty three outcome of the public exhibition of the street banner part, challenged by councillor Luxford. GM three slash twenty three Sydney Film Festival sponsorship, no challenge. CP one slash twenty three service New South Wales partnership agreement. Challenged by councillor Olive. CS one slash twenty three Randwick Peterson cricket request for additional funding. Got a call out, challenged by councillor Pandefini. CS two slash twenty three assessment of potential airborne asbestos, asbestos issues at Heffron Park, unchallenged. CS three slash twenty three community sporting groups challenged by councillor Sid. Okay, uh, CS four slash twenty three cycleways bicycle facility, facilities advisory committee, November twenty twenty two. I almost didn't hear that, uh, okay, uh, CO one slash twenty three councillor and staff. Okay, challenged by councillor Hamilton. CO two slash twenty three appointment of electoral commissioner to administer the September twenty twenty four council elections, unchallenged. CO three slash twenty three, uh, National General Assembly Local Government, unchallenged. CO four slash twenty three audit risk and improvement committee annual performance report twenty twenty two. Unchallenged, CO five slash twenty three identity management policy. Challenged by councillor Olive. CO six slash twenty three rating options and other responses to Airbnb, challenged by councillor Hay. CO seven slash twenty three investment report, November twenty twenty two. Uh, okay, challenged by councillor Veach, CO eight slash twenty three, December twenty twenty two, investment report. Okay, unchallenged, CO nine slash twenty three investment report, January twenty twenty three, unchallenged. CO ten slash twenty three quarterly budget review, December twenty twenty two, unchallenged. CO eleven slash twenty three monthly financial report is as at the thirtieth of November, unchallenged. CO twelve slash twenty three monthly financial report as at the thirty first of December. CO thirteen slash twenty three monthly financial report as at the thirty first of January twenty twenty three. Okay, uh, councillor Sid moves the unchallenged items, uh, I actually heard councillor Luxford first. Um, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, we now move to the first challenge item. Which is GM two slash twenty three outcome of the public exhibition street banner, banner policy. Page nineteen challenged by councillor Luxford, councillor Luxford.
Yeah, Mister Mayor, I'd like to, um, move the, the report as per the recommendation. But I would like to note that I'm highly disappointed that, um, after asking for. Further investigation into banners for Kensington, we still have none. We still ha- well, we have no more than the three that are in Todman Avenue that people barely see. So, um, whilst I recommend, um, and I'm happy to move this report, I'm deeply disappointed. That Kensington again misses out on banners, but has very smart polls that they can't go on.
Thank you, I have a hand up from councillor Veach, councillor Veach, you seconding the motion?
Look, I'd like to ask the mover if she consider, uh, making an amendment, because while on page twenty. It has proposed seven, uh, new flags for Kingsford Meek Street Plague and, and just three for Kingsford. It still hasn't been included in the actual policy on page forty five, it still only lists the three. Um, and so I believe that needs to be changed, because we've seen this report a number of times now. And I don't understand why the additional ten are not in the actual policy. So if we vote on this, we'll only be voting for three, so is that correct?
Um, can I just seek clarification from the, uh, manager of, um, communications, Mister Hay? Looking very smart.
Um, thank you Mister Mayor, um, the, if you throw me there, the, um. Uh, those new locations in Kingston aren't included in the policy because they're not actually in, in effect yet. Uh, we're in a process of installing those, those banner brackets at the moment, so once they're in effect, we'll update the policy. Um, and they'll become part of the street banner programme, um, in Kensington, we are looking at installing additional banners. Uh, opposite the ones on Todman as well, so you remember there were, there were three to the, to the west of Anzac Parade as well. So we're looking to that as an option as well, and I just note that recommendation, um. Point B authorises the GM to make these sort of changes to the banner policy to update it with when new, um, banner locations are installed.
Uh, follow up question from councillor Veach.
So I just, I still don't understand why. I mean, then this proposal is really, it's not incorporated into the policy, there's, so there's literally just no guarantee. There's no timeline, I, 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 I mean, would the mover consider actually just adding the additional ten to make that thirteen? In page forty five, as, as per the proposal on page twenty. Cause at, at the moment, it just looks like.
Um, Mister Mayor, going along with councillor Veach, you just said, it's actually, is it appropriate, if the mover says it? That we just add exactly the same as what's on page twenty, proposed Kingsford Meek Street. And proposed Kingsford Car Park in seven and three and just write it exactly the same way proposed, and that's, as councillor Veach has said, that way it's in writing.
Um, that proposed wording, uh, from my understanding is accepted by councillor Luxford. Councillor Veach, as the now seconder of the motion, thank you, um, are there any further speakers? Okay, just to confirm that we've included an additional ten proposed banners as outlined in page twenty of the policy. Thank you, there being no further speakers, we're now put it, all those in favour, all those against, declare that carried, thank you. We now move to CP one slash twenty three service New South Wales partnership agreement for small business, uh, challenged by councillor Olive. Councillor Olive, um, if you were moving something different from the recommendation, okay, that's fine, are you moving the recommendation?
Just a clarification, really.
Okay, can I just, are, are you moving it on the business paper or do you need somebody else?
I'll move it, I, I just want to get a clarification.
Can I get a second please, seconded councillor Sid, uh, councillor Olive, please feel free.
Okay, um, it's just that, you know, sort of, uh, I wanted to, uh, work out, you know, sort of, uh, what the difference is. On, uh, it's page eighty seven, where it talks about customer payment, service New South Wales will collect payments from customers. For transactions set out in the service agreement, but yet on, in the discussion, it says service New South Wales for business. Provides tree, uh, free personalised support for small business owners. So, um, is it, uh, can someone explain the, um, the, the difference there, there's a payment in one and not in another, yeah?
Through to the relevant officer.
Uh, thank you, through you Mister Mayor, um, we, um, the. Uh, new acting, uh, sorry, the new director of, um, community development, culture, sorry. Um, checked with service New South, New South Wales today, and they advise that, that, that those provisions in the schedule. Uh, there is a standard, um, I guess a standard, uh, way of processing fees on payments if they were applicable. But there are non-applicable in relation to this agreement, so in the hypothetical situation where council. Uh, wanted service New South Wales to process some fees or arrangements for them, then that process would apply. But there are no fees associated with, with this agreement.
Okay, thank you, I, I, I had a whole scenario of what it could mean, but it doesn't mean that at all, so I'm happy to go ahead.
Great news, the second of the motion, do you wish to speak on it? No, there being any other speakers, there being no further speakers, don't believe you wish to close the debate, all those in favour?
Aye.
All those against, declare that carried, thank you. Uh, CS one slash twenty three Randwick Petersham cricket request for additional funding. Uh, challenged by councillor Pandefini, councillor Pandefini, could you please outline what it is you are moving? Okay, could I call for a mover of the motion on the business paper, moved councillor, uh, D'Souza, seconded councillor Sid. Uh, councillor D'Souza is the mover of the motion, do you wish to speak on it, councillor Sid is the second up, councillor Pandefini with your question.
Um, I just want to clarify, um, when they came, did they say that there was a women's fifteen?
No, no, they, they wanted.
And how many, how long have they been?
Five years.
Five years.
Five years.
To me, it just feels like a, a lot, I mean, I'm happy to support this amount of funding, but I would just like to make a note that it is an extraordinary amount of money. Um, and I would also like to make the comparison, I hate to do, but that total amount. That is going annually to, uh, some cultural, around about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So to me, um, I just want to make that point. So to me, um, I just want to make that point. And I would also like to, to make a note that, you know, I think that we really, really need to encourage them to ensure that we do have. We're going to continue to fund them at the extreme of our budget.
Thank you councillor. I saw a hand up from councillor Veach and then councillor Chapel, uh, councillor Veach then Chapel.
Yeah, it's pretty disappointing that after, what, over a hundred years, there's still no women's cricket team. It's not just five years. It's over a hundred and twenty years, actually. Um, and so, you know. I've, I've had res- I've had a resident who contacted me well over twelve months ago who lives on Cottonham Avenue. Who's, who had some very specific requests about improving, uh, safety and doing tree plantings. Uh, doing line markings on the car park there. He's still asking. Like, I've, I've had questions on notice. Um, and, and, you know, there's people, there's, it's a hugely used, uh, oval, you know, there's. People do walk their dogs there, people use it for all sorts of things. Um. And as councillor Pendlefeeny noted, you know, it's really pretty much on the same level as our community. Cultural grants and in fact our whole community cultural development, uh, programme. You know, it's pretty much the same as that. Like, I just think it's actually a big ask on top of what we already. Give them and, uh, I really feel given the prominence. Of cricket in this country that they should have the ability to actually go and get the money themselves. Um, it's a very prominent sport. They've got some very, uh, well-known, uh. Prominent, uh, members of the club who've come here tonight, who surely would be able to help attract that. And maybe if they did have the female members, they would get more sponsorship. So actually, I don't know that I can support this. I think we give them enough money already.
Thank you. I have a hand up from councillor Chapel, then councillor Nielsen.
Thank you. I have a question for social colleagues. They, they mentioned, um, in the presentation that council has. As well as the annual, uh, support for the field et cetera, um, also provided facilities for them. Can you talk to us about what that actually has constituted over the last few years?
The director of city services.
Sorry, through you, uh, Mister Mayor. Um, so. Within the last five years, I, I would broadly say council, um, firstly. Upgraded the could you able grandstand amenities to be able to facilitate, um, inclusive use of both male and female participants. So. Could you grandstand into four, um, change rooms? So that was probably the first, uh, supporting facility that council embarked on to, um, promote female participation in sport. Um, subsequent to that, we upgraded, um, the outdoor training area at the, uh, Snake Park. Um, cricket wickets, um. Trying to think it Kensington. We've, we've upgraded various, um, public cricket nets in the L G A as well. Not necessarily the specific ceramic petition cricket, but, um, sort of free, free to utilise from, from, from the, the community. Uh, I think that was probably broadly the, uh, the support that councils, uh, provided cricket. Is there another part of the question? Sorry, councillor Chapel?
Councillor Chapel, with your comment.
Thank you. Um, so I guess I'd just like to echo councillor Pendlefeeny's and councillor Veach's concerns about the, um. Slow pace at which this club, uh, has added a women's team and engaged women's sport. And I find it quite surprising that they, they recognise it enough that it is mentioned, committed in their contributions, but not enough that they actually have these teams. A horde. Um, I'd also like to say, a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year for a hundred and twenty people to play a sport. Um, has to be one of the highest costs per head in, in that we sponsor all this council. It's about a thousand bucks a head. Um, and that level of support plus sponsorship, plus they're here in the West and they're getting money from other councils. Um, it really does seem like they are asking an extraordinary amount of financial contribution around council.
Councillor D'Souza. Oh, sorry, my apologies. Councillor, it is councillor Nielsen, then councillor D'Souza. So, so ca- councillor Nielsen, I'm, I'm just going to interrupt you because there is something coming through the, um. The, the mic, it is potentially a cricket, cricket. Um, there is some form of noise disturbance. What, what I, what I might actually ask councillor, mm, councillor Nielsen, could you actually just turn off your microphone for a second? Um, look, um, ca- can I just confirm with the, um, gentleman at the audio, audio visual desk? Um, that you can hear through councillor, um, uh, Nielsen's microphone?
The words came out and all of a sudden. Cricket happened and the girls were playing and they were winning and everybody was so happy. And we won, yes. I, I think we should, um, allow the club a little bit more leeway and patience in terms of developing the, um. Women's team and I do believe that, um, they're very keen to do that. I totally take their, um, their word on that one. And I also think the fact that they are maintaining those three important fields at a very high standard. That's the other important thing that we have to remember. We're not talking about just a, uh, a field that a, a local school might have in their own schoolyard. We're talking about proper, good standard and, um, Mister Whitney mentioned the difficulty of dealing with some umpires who. Uh, ridiculous, well, not ridiculous, you have tricky and, um, critical when they should not be critical and should be more praiseworthy and so on. So we all know how difficult it is to deal with umpires when we're playing cricket and so on and, um. Following the rules and regulations. So I think we should be continuing on our strong support of this cricket club. And let's see if we can put a bit more pressure on them to develop. And prove the fact that the women are going to be part of it. We'll give them a couple of years, maybe max.
The other two clubs in the area do have.
Yes, but I think there have been reasons, um, and I think perhaps we could, um, talk to the club a little bit more about that. So, anyway.
Uh, I don't know whether I've got the exact words for, uh, for this, but, um, I would just. Like trying to add an amendment that council write to Cricket New South Wales. To, uh, do, uh, what they can to support women's, uh, cricket and the, um. Uh, facilitation of, uh, will it women's cricket, uh, women and girls cricket programmes in the Randwick Peter. Petersham, um, uh, uh, area for, you know, or the area that is, um. Uh, that is just covered by Randwick Petersham Cricket Club, something along those lines.
And councillor D'Souza, as the mover of the motion, do you accept the incorporation?
There's little need, I, I don't.
No, okay.
Okay, well, if, if, if I can see consensus, I'm happy to.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, uh, councillor D'Souza has incorporated the proposed wording into the motion. Are there any further speakers? Councillor D'Souza, would you like to speak and close the debate? Councillor D'Souza.
Mister Mayor, cricket is our national sport. And we must remember how important it is to nurture our national sport, nurture those things that are culturally important to us. The T twenty Australian Women's Team just won the World Cup. For the sixth time out of seven. So it speaks well that women's cricket in Australia is doing particularly well. Now, I don't think it was through lack of trying that we don't have women's cricket incorporated in the Petersham. Randwick Petersham Club. They are trying, they'll continue to try and I think this year they'll get it off the ground. Now, the other thing about this great cricket club is that they hosted the Irish team that came out for the T twenty men's. Team and they have hosted them on other occasions. That they're not just a cricket club, they're actually a cultural ambassador for our community. So when we invest in them, we're investing in our community. So this is, it, it is a large amount of money, but as we can see, those that follow cricket, and I follow it very closely. The cricket pitches in India, if they're not up to scratch, they, they can lead. To unwelcome outcomes. So anyway, cricket is an expensive sport. Maintaining the fields is expensive. But it is our national sport. So let's support this club. And let's do what we can to support women's cricket as well. And I think they will do it this year. I'll leave it at that, Mister Mayor.
Thank you. Um, there being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? I declare that carried. Thank you. We now move on to the next item of business. C S three slash twenty three Community Sporting Group Usage of Fields. Moved councillor Sid. Do I have a second up councillor? Uh, I saw Luxford first, actually. Um, seconded councillor Luxford, uh, councillor Sid is the mover of the motion.
Mister Mayor, I just want to, um, point out I'm moving as per recommendation. And all I'd like to say is that as a regular attendee of the sports committee, that, um. Our, the people that we're taking the advice from who've written this report, as in Asif, uh, Brian Zammatt and Nick. Um, are probably as the people who attend the sports committee or the clubs. Know that they're the best in the business and they comment that on that nearly every time we go. Um, so when they say they need help with running these fields, you know you're getting expert advice. So. I just would recommend to, to all the councillors that we do exactly what they say. Because this, the actual, um, giving the fields time to regrow is actually coming from the clubs. It's not just council. We don't just want to do this for the fun of it. We're actually doing it, um, because they've asked us to. And because we need to maybe even send the rangers out, there's actual, uh. When we say there's random people playing on these fields, they're not just one or two people having a kick of the ball. There's full on soccer teams most weekends having a comp with just coloured t-shirts and they're ripping up. And they play within the goals. They do everything where we try to prevent people from going from. So we really do need to keep these people off. And as we've heard before, there's schools that are doing their full knockout comps on there. Uh, taking advantage of the free school, um, offer that we made out to most of our schools. But the one thing I do want to mention is that when we talk about in the report. Uh, local schools will still play there for free. I'd like to include that obviously as the city, uh, manager, uh, the director of city services knows. That matchable public school is across the road from Heffron Park and they use it every Friday. So obviously, because they're in Bayside Council, so obviously. They won't be included as a non-local school. Thank you.
Question regarding the comment that, um, councillor Sid, uh, in moving this. So do, do you want us to do more? Our rangers or someone to be double checking who's actually using the fields more? So is that specifically said in the, uh, resolution? It's in the, it's in the preamble and everything, but is it actually in the, um, recommendation? I don't think it actually is. So I think in the recommendation you need to add that, um, councillor Sid.
I'll put that to the director of city services. Is that possible to mention? Or even the acting director of, because it's compliance, yeah. Oh, there, okay.
Uh, to the director of city services.
Thank you. Through you, Mister Mayor. Can I clarify, is, is there, um, requests to amend the, um, the business paper? To include, uh, additional, um, inspections from the, the rangers?
Yes.
Yeah, that, well, I can see, yeah, that's a matter for council. There's no issue if that was included. I, I can confirm that, um, the council's, uh, regulatory team. And the rangers and the sports for the team are working to do that, to, to continue on the audit. But should council choose to, um, put that in the recommendation, there'll be no issue.
Okay, um, yep. Thank you councillor Luxford is the seconder. I assume you accept that as well? Yep, thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Sid, I don't think you need to close the debate. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. Uh, C O one slash twenty three councillor and staff interaction and access po- to information policy. Uh, moved, ca- well, challenged by councillor Hamilton. Councillor Hamilton, could you please outline what it is that you are moving?
I'm moving, um, as per the business paper, but I have two amendments. Yes.
Have I?
No. What?
Oh, my apologies. Um, councillor, councillor Sid had challenged. The, uh, cycle ways and business facility advisory committee read and note report. Uh, councillor Sid?
I'm, I'm not actually moving this, Mister Mayor. I just.
Count, please continue.
I haven't started yet.
Ca- couns- ca-.
I might actually stand here for a minute and fifty six because I only got to say two words.
Are, are you, you're not moving it? Councillor Chapel, are you happy to move it? Can I have a second up? Okay, seconded councillor Olive. Councillor Chapel, you weigh for your rights. Councillor Olive, you weigh for your rights. Councillor Sid, your ti- your question.
Asking a question, Mister Mayor, that the. Being a regular public transport user now and going through Kingsford and Kensington, there's only two lanes. And being on the bus regularly and there's lots of traffic during peak hour. There's people riding their bikes on Anzac Parade and I just want to ask a question. When the bike track is finished in Doncaster and Houston Road. Do, are we possible as a council to ban bikes from Anzac Parade once that bike track?
It's state road.
Just spent, or the government, government has spent five million, six million dollars on. Um, can we restrict them to riding on the bike track so that the traffic can flow on Anzac Parade? There's abs- it's dangerous. There's absolutely no room, what's because of the light rail and the, uh, lane ways are very narrow. Very dangerous for the bike riders. It's very dangerous for the drivers. Is there a possibility that we can restrict them to the actual bike path that we've just built?
Through to the director of city services.
Thank you. Through, Mister Mayor. No, that's not possible.
Thank you. Um, there being no further speakers, councillor Chapel, you don't wish to close the debate. There being no further speakers, now put it. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you unanimously. Uh, C O one slash twenty three councillor Hamilton.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I'll make it very, very quick. So, uh, moving as per the, um, business paper, I have two amendments. Within the policy document itself and I have sent them through to, um, Mister Kelly. The first one is in the preface on page two, two, four in the books, three in the policy document. And in the first paragraph, like, at the end of the sentence, and ultimately the council's performance will suffer. And what I'd like to add is that meaning the whole community could be impacted. So rather than, um, ending the statement there, just recognizing that when we don't get along, the, the impact is felt by the full community. And the second is that under access to information, same page, the key to the relationship. Second paragraph, second sentence, I want to remove, um, about six or seven words there. Councillors should not be seeking to. And instead of interrogate the minute tie of the council's operations or to direct or influence. I'm suggesting that its councillors should not be seeking to direct or influence staff in the performance of their duties. Because who says how big or small Minutai really is because we consider everything's huge, of course. Um, and I don't consider that interrogate is, um, really a word that we need to have in here. That's it.
Thank you. Do I have a second up? Seconded councillor Burst. Councillor Burst is the seconder? No? Okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers? Uh, there is a hand up from councillor, uh, Nielsen.
Yeah, I'm not, um, uh, I'm not, I haven't looked at it in as close detail, um, to. Fully challenge councillor Hamilton's observations except that I'm rather reluctant to be making changes to this document. Because I think it's one of those documents where one point follows another point, follows another point very logically. And I would prefer if we're going to make changes to this, that we perhaps, um, postpone it for a briefing. To go through it, to examine it. But if we're not going to do that, then I would be reluctant to make the changes. I think the other thing that's important for us as councillors to take into, um. Note here is that we are supposed to be very respectful of council officers and I think. Respectful of council officers and I think that this is what this policy is all about. And I think that we can sometimes, because of our. Whatever reason we're being hassled by other people, residents and supporters and so on. We can be a bit too assertive in terms of what we want to find out the answers to and think that we know everything. Um and we can sometimes be perhaps not as respectful as we should be. And so I think this is written in a way to be very spe- to to encourage us to be very respectful. Towards the staff. So I I think I would be, as I said, very reluctant to change this. But if we were to think of changing it, I would prefer that we have defer it for a briefing, councillor Hamilton, to just go through it. Further into. Okay, well, I'm not going to support your, yeah, no, okay.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Councillor Veach.
Yeah, look, I'd like to um, councillor Hamilton, I don't always agree on on things, but I would like to thank her for picking up. On this. Um look, we see uh councils all across New South Wales from time to time. Running into trouble. And I think it is incumbent. We are elected as councillors to to do our job and 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 from time to time. You know, there are things that we need to ask questions on. And that is part of our role. And I think, I think this actually does really go a step too far. I mean, that is really quite a subjective statement. I agree uh that we are not to direct or influence staff in the performance of their duties. But there, I don't believe that uh anything in the Local Government Act. Uh actually supports this change. And I will be supporting councillor Hamilton's uh amendments.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Hamilton to close the debate. Thank you. All those in favour of the motion as amended? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. We now move to C O five slash twenty three identity management policy challenged by councillor Olive. Councillor Olive, could you please outline whether or not, or what you are moving? If not, I will call for another mover.
Um I'd be happy if someone else moved it, but.
Can I have a mover of the notice of motion, please? Oh, sorry. Thank you. Moved councillor Hamilton, seconded. Seconded councillor Burst, thank you, thank you. Uh councillor Hamilton is the mover. Do you wish to speak to it? Thank you. Councillor Burst is the seconder. Thank you, councillor Olive.
I I just really had a question, you know, sort of um. How how much does this policy relate to um council uh councillors? And you know, sort of their devices and things like, is it, it, reading it, it seems to relate to staff. But you know, so it does cover, you know, sort of councillors as well and you know, sort of um to what de- to what degree um to the relevant officer.
Through to Mister Mayor, the director of corporate services.
Uh covers all members of council, including councillors.
Um so that would, that would be, you know, sort of uh because they have their devices and things like that, so. Um um if it covers councillors and we're not really sure about this at all and what it actually means, should we have a briefing on it? Um so um I think that that, I I I'll move that, you know, sort of that um. Uh before passing this, we defer this and um and ask for a briefing.
You don't accept the amendment? Okay, do you have a second up to your amendment, councillor Olive, councillor Chapel? Uh councillor Chapel is the second up. Thank you. Um I have a question through to the uh. To the director of corporate services. Uh does the policy apply to non-council equipment which is utilized by councillors?
It applies to the connections you're making and the data you're getting access to, so indirectly, yes.
Thank you. Um in light of that, um I support the proposed amendment by uh councillor Olive. Um are there any further speakers? On the amendment, there being no further speakers on the proposed amendment. Um I'll now um uh call for a vote on the amendment. All those in favour of the amendment for a deferral to a briefing, say aye. All those against? I declare the amend amendment carried. Thank you. Uh councillor Olive is the mover of the motion. Thank you. No further debate. There being no further debate. I'll now put uh the motion as amended uh by councillor Olive, that the matter be deferred for a councillor briefing. Uh all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Uh we now go to C O seven slash twenty three investment report, November twenty twenty two. Challenged by councillor Veach. Councillor Veach, could you please outline? Can I ask you, can I ask you to challenge that, please? I don't have that recorded. So that's challenged by councillor Hay. Okay, councillor Hay. Could you please outline what it is that you're moving?
Um I'd like to move this in amended form. Uh Mister Kelly, could I pick up the email I sent? Um effectively, uh uh what I want us to move is to be uh against the bed tax. Now, when we think about what happens uh with regard to short term accommodation. Uh the accommodation sector is already uh providing significant financial contribution to. Uh local government and through various taxes. Uh to give you a short list. Uh there's obviously the stamp duty on property purchase, the fire levy. Uh tax on various payments for Airbnb, additional council rates, tax on revenue of federal tax, capital gains tax. Uh tax on employees, tax on consumables, tax on trades and tax on utilities. Uh there's already a significant number of taxes that are already applied. And we don't need to add another tax. Briefly, uh. There was a consideration for a bed tax approximately twenty five years ago. And it was estimated that it would cost New South Wales a hundred million dollars in lost revenue. And obviously that being twenty five years ago, you can imagine how much that has increased. Now, what is the impact of this tax? Who are we taxing? We are taxing potential tourists. So if we tax our tourists. The uh the tourism will fall, our local businesses will suffer. Also, uh let's not forget that. Uh a lot of the short term accommodations for people visiting sick ones in hu- uh sick family and friends in hospital. So we don't want to tax them. And of course, the tax is accommodation under ninety days. Now, there was a change to U N S W. Uh since I was there, they've moved to uh from semesters to trimesters. So instead of uh, so it's very possible that in a ten week term. A student comes along and they hire uh a accommodation for seventy seven days, ten weeks plus a one week break. And we're going to hit them with another tax. This tax is going to impact the people who. Uh need our, need financial support. We don't need to tax them anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Hamilton. Councillor Hamilton as the seconder.
I just wanna make a quick statement that um, yes, that's true, that once we, once the universities make a change. Then the community around it has to accommodate, especially considering the the size of the student body. And um all the support services that sit around it, then of course the hospital. So I think this is a really smart move from councillor Hayes, so I support him.
Uh thank you. Um are there any further speakers, councillor Chapel?
Um I would just like to foreshadow a motion.
Thank you. Uh councillor um Chapel's foreshadowing a motion in the event that this fails. Um would would you actually just like to outline what it is you're foreshadowing, just so people are aware?
I'd just like to foreshadow the motion as it is on the business paper.
Okay, thank you. Um are there any further speakers? Uh councillor Sid.
Um I'm speaking for the actual motion or the amendment as such. Um I find it actually very hard that we're gonna be able to do this. I think it probably cost us more to probably run it than to get the money back. I also think that it is not gonna stop Airbnb's. Obviously, the owners would just charge. Put that tax on whoever's renting it, so it's actually providing nothing. Um and I don't, it's a very regressive tax. I don't know why we'd start thinking to go forward. And if we need to provide housing to help bring rents down. Why aren't we looking forward to doing uh partnerships with places like City West Housing or. St George Housing and have affordable housing. Why aren't we planning for the future? Why isn't council building blocks a unit? Why aren't we coming out with other forward thinking ideas of how we can bring rents down? By building our own housing or building housing or partnerships or whatever. But it's just more positive ideas rather than regressive tax ideas.
Thank you. I have a question to the uh. Uh to the director of city planning. Um what is the recommendation for in the event that this um proposed uh levy was in. Instituted by the New South Wales Government? What is the recommendation of council for the use of those funds if they were remitted back to council?
Uh through you, Mister Mayor. It's proposed that the. Uh any funds that were received by council would be allocated to uh affordable housing.
Uh thank you. Um as a follow up to the uh acting director of city planning. Um could you please confirm uh in the summer months, the number of short term rentals that we've identified as. Uh s- uh as located in the north of the city or or the percentage as it relates to our housing stock?
Uh through you, Mister Mayor. Um according to the number of premises um on the register. Um it equates to approximately four point four percent in the northern part of the city.
Um and just as one follow up, i- is it, is it in your professional opinion um that a percentage of uh. Uh short term rental accommodation of such an extent is having uh an impact on the price and the supply. Of uh long term rental stock?
Through you, Mister Mayor, yes.
Uh thank you. Are there any further speakers? Thank you. There is a uh, I was contemplating it. Um uh councillor Luxford.
Yeah, I can't support the amendment. Um uh. Most other cities, or quite a few cities in the world, do charge bed tax um or tourist tax. Um having spent some time in Venice, um we paid tourist tax and. You know, it ha- it didn't stop tourism, it doesn't stop tourism in Venice. It doesn't stop the world from going around, but it assists them. To be able to protect their city and and to do certain things a little bit better. So I'm all for um.
Um thank you. I have a hand up from councillor Rosenfeld and then from councillor Chimp.
Uh yeah, I support the amendment, given that there's not a lot of uh hotels around the L G A, um espe- especially in Central Ward. I do think there's a great value in in Airbnb for tourism. I'd like uh a lot of tourists to come and see Maruba Beach, the um uh for the for the great beach it is. And uh be able to uh have accommodation near near the beach. Uh I didn't say that. Uh and um yeah, I fully support it. Um and um um the the Airbnb system, I think it's 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 a great system. I I've used it myself. Um uh going into regional New South Wales and Victoria. But she's a different faction, so fair enough.
Okay. Thank you, thank you councillors. Um uh what I might do is actually, I'd just like to use this opportunity to remind you that I will take. Declarations of interest at any point. Um are there any further spe- speakers? Uh councillor Chapel.
Sorry, I'd just like to speak against the motion as amended. Um I think if you've read the report here. Um obviously, what I was proposing um was looking at rating on these properties. Because I think they're not being used as residential properties, they're being used as commercial properties. And the numbers in there are properties that are entirely let bears that out. Um we're told it's, the rating is too hard, we can't do that. Um we're also told that using the L E P power to actually enforce what's residential and what's commercial is also too hard. A a bed tax is is literally the simplest, most elegant way. Of providing a return to the community of the additional use of these properties. Um I'm kind of not surprised that there's some opposition within parts of the Liberal Party. Given housing affordability has run out of control um under this government. Um. I'd also say, like, the idea that this will stop Airbnb and is somehow a regressive tax when it is primarily targeted at tourists. Who are hiring entire properties um is kind of not how that term works. Um I'd love um anybody to bring forward some motions about housing partnerships. I think that'd be fantastic, councillor said. So if you'd like to do that. Um I'm very happy to be here in second. Um building new housing is all well and good. Um but we have a lot of housing here that is not being used to house our residents. We have a lot of empty homes and we have a lot of Airbnbs. It makes sense to use that as housing first and then as holiday letting second.
I have a question from councillor Sid. A question.
Mr Smith, the question is, do how do we defer, or how do we distinguish? Between people who are getting Airbnbs on the north side, which happens to be right next door to one of Sydney's. Or New South Wales' premium hospitals. And as you know, with the Ronald McDonald House, we have people that stay there from the country. Obviously, that only has about five or six rooms. So how do we know that the people that are hiring these Airbnbs aren't people with families who are suffering in hospitals and they need somewhere to stay? So how do we distinguish between we're taxing people that need to go to a hospital and provide help? Apart from someone who's staying at a um in, at a beach.
Through to the uh acting director of city services. Sorry, of city planning.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I am not aware how that would be um identified.
Thank, thank you. I have a question, a hand up from councillor Burst.
Um it's simple, a tax is a tax. And secondly, um uh through the relevant officer, do we know? Uh through the relevant officer, do we know um how many properties that are vacant in our, in Ramick City Council? Like I hear other councils talk about all these empty properties. Um do we have any figures on that? Any evidence to back up?
Through, through to the director of city planning.
Uh thank you, Miss Mayor. Um I'm not aware, but I'm happy to take that on notice.
Yep, thank you. Are there any further speakers? Uh. Yeah, we'll we'll let councillor Olive go. Councillor Olive.
I don't think this ga- this uh uh amendment goes any way in uh to tackle the um. Affordable housing crisis that we see. And you know, sort of, I mean, I think that Coogee is uh, it's Coogee Ramwick. Um we were talking about the northern end of Ramick before, but Ramick in general is in danger of um. Of having, you know, sort of a layer of uh the, of workers, you know, sort of. Um moved out of their suburb and that's probably already happened to a large group, continuing on. Um uh and not being able to live in the suburbs where they work. And so I think that this is uh, the original motion is uh trying in in its best with. Um through a a range of, you know, sort of um uh legislative entanglements. To uh deal with that issue and deal with the the problem that we have. Where um uh non-hosted Airbnb is taking over um a long term rental. And this is trying to address that particular problem in an indirect way by creating more affordable housing. And so that's why I am arguing against this amendment.
Thank you. Uh yep, councillor Hay to close the debate.
Um just quickly, uh I'm a fan of an economist named Art Laffer who puts it this way. Uh the reason we tax cigarettes is because we wanna stop people smoking. The reason we wanna tax. Find people for speeding is because you don't want them causing crashes and. Why would you tax people who want to come, who want to stay? Obviously, it's because, obviously, it's gonna have a negative impact on small business. On on a, on people coming and enjoying our city. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now uh put the motion uh moved as amended by councillor Hay. All those in favour? All those against? Okay, there's been a call for a division. Uh couns-. Are we ready, Mister Kelly? All those in favour of the motion as amended, please raise your hand. Councillor Hamilton, councillor Hay, councillor Rosenfeld, councillor McCafferty. Councillor Sid, councillor Burst, councillor D'Souza. All those against? Councillor Pandefini, Nielsen, Veach, Luxford, Chapel, Olive, Wilson and Parker. I declare the uh amended motion lost. Councillor Chapel to move the recommendation on the business paper.
Yes, I'd just like to move the recommendation on the business paper and I'd like to also respond to councillor said earlier, who was, oh, was it councillor Burst, one of you? Yes, I'd just like to move the recommendation on the business paper and I'd like to also respond to councillor Sedd earlier, who was, oh was it councillor Burst, one of you? Who was asking the number of um empty homes in our L G A, it came out of the last census as nine point nine percent, which is five thousand nine hundred and thirty nine homes. I think that is very ripe for a future motion.
I agree with that, uh councillor Veitch is the seconder? Thank you, are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'll now put it, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, thank you. We now go to uh the investment report, C O seven slash twenty three, challenged by councillor Veitch.
Uh actually, I don't want to move this, I just had some.
Just before you continue, can I have a mo- a move, move councillor Hamilton, second one councillor Rosenfeld. Councillor Hamilton, you waive your right to speak, councillor Rosenfeld? All yours councillor Veitch.
Um look, I'd I'd like to uh actually thank councillor Olive for his amendment of a of a report last year, or maybe it was a motion, it was a while ago now. Uh and also thank the staff for the additional uh information provided in this report. Uh which is about um our exposure to uh fossil fuels as detailed on page three hundred and thirty four and thirty five. Uh and this is also uh noted in the other investment reports. Um it provides really, really helpful information, um I don't think I'll be uh putting through any amendments tonight, but um. I think we're at a point now where council really needs to uh closely consider our investments. Um we are spending a lot of, uh putting our staff, putting in a huge amount of efforts to tackle uh climate change. In council operations and also within the community, uh it's something that we uh really pride ourselves on and often spruik. And the fact that that we've invested in uh these companies. Uh doesn't align uh with the values uh of council, uh as. Frequently, you know, we've got Costa Jordi Ardis, you know, speaking on behalf of council, presenting at events. Uh we're constantly spruiking our green credentials and I think. In in the very near future, we're going to have to look at this and make some hard decisions, thank you.
Thank you, there being no further speakers, assume there's no further debate, um I'll now put the motion, all those in favour? Those against, declare that carried, thank you, uh to confirm there are no more challenged staff reports. Um councillors, what I might say is that we will um have a short adjournment for fifteen minutes. Um and we will return at.
Five minutes.
Okay, we're gonna s- it, we're we're gonna adjourn for ten because you're gonna take ten. Um and so we will return at um ten twenty two. Uh thank you councillors, I now reopen the uh Ramick council meeting fifteen minutes later at ten twenty five. Now please proceed. Okay, thank you, uh notice of motion one slash twenty three from councillor D'Souza to investigate. Establishing a truth and reconciliation group, uh moved councillor D'Souza, do I have a second, I seconded councillor Burst, councillor D'Souza is the mover of the motion.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Councillors, where there's wrong, we must right it, where there's suffering, we must stop it, where there is injustice, we must correct it. Where there is discord, we must create harmony, where there is despair, we must offer hope. Where there is darkness, let us bring light, we have a great opportunity, councillors and Mister Mayor. To correct the wrongs of the past and embark on a journey of healing, inclusiveness and acceptance. Of all of us as equals, this is not the end of the beginning, but more the beginning of the end. For too long, our indigenous people have been, as Ali Baba said, second class citizens in their own country. Through this truth and reconciliation group, we can continue our journey of healing as we speak the truth. However difficult or unpopular, and try and find common ground. There is a bumpy road ahead, but we are headed in the right direction, we need to show empathy and compassion. True reconciliation, if it is ever to be achieved, demands leaders with the intellect and moral courage of people like Albo and other leaders. Able to rise above the unserious world of identity politics. The truth, my friends, is more enunciated than that one dimensional judgment, and a lot more interesting. We mustn't be fooled by those racists and bigots peddling faulty ideas. Let me conclude by saying, everybody may not be good, but there is something good in everybody. Let us listen to their stories and give them a voice as we work on healing. And building a better Australia, thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you councillor D'Souza, councillor Burst is the seconder.
I'm ha- happy to support uh support uh some robust debate on this issue, thank you.
Thank you, are there any other speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor D'Souza, you don't wish to close it, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, thank you, N M two slash twenty three, notice of motion councillor D'Souza, safety issues at the intersection of Military Road and Vanarong Road, Matreville. Uh moved councillor D'Souza, seconded councillor Burst, councillor D'Souza. Thank you very much, councillor Burst. Are there any further speakers, there being no further speakers, I'll now put the motion, all those in favour? Those against, declare that carried, thank you very much. N M three slash tw- two three, notice of motion from councillor Rosenfeld. Uh to celebrate Israeli independence day on the seventy fifth anniversary, uh moved councillor Rosenfeld, seconded by. Uh I actually saw councillor D'Souza. Moved councillor Rosenfeld, seconded by, I actually saw councillor D'Souza, second, Rosenfeld's, D'Souza, councillor Rosenfeld.
I'd like an amendment.
Yep, councillor Rosenfeld.
Yes, so coming up on the twenty-sixth of April is a very significant anniversary, the seventy-fifth anniversary of the Declaration of Independence of Israel, the creation of Israel. And it is celebrated by both the Israelis and in Israel, and also the Jewish community throughout the, what we call in the Jewish community the diaspora. There is a large Jewish community in Randwick LGA, there is a growing Jewish community in the Randwick LGA as Rabbi for Maruba synagogue, or the previous rabbi I should say, Yossi Friedman has mentioned in a sermon at one of the high holidays last year, in Maruba that is. And we have a high school, a Jewish high school, two Jewish primary schools, two synagogues, and an aged care and residential home centre that are both, are all connected with the Jewish community in the LGA. Hence I think it appropriate that, like we do with the Greek community for their great celebrations, we fly the Israeli flag at Randwick Town Hall on that day and produce content for council social media channels to mark the occasion. Yep, that's all I have to say.
Thank you councillor D'Souza is the seconder. Okay, councillor Olive, could you please outline your amendment? Councillor Olive, could you turn on your microphone? Thank you.
Yeah, the amendment is, you know, sort of to, you can see it there, it says fly the harmony flag on March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, celebrate multicultural Australia, produce content for council social media channel, and e-news to mark Harmony Day, and write to the Jewish Board of Deputies and prominent leaders in the Jewish community acknowledging the contribution made by the Jewish community in Randwick City.
Thank you. Do I have a second to the amendment? Seconded councillor Chapel, councillor Olive. Oh, sorry, seconded councillor Pandefany, councillor Olive, please continue.
Yeah, the same sentiments as, you know, sort of for Greek Independence Day, that Randwick Council makes significant financial and in-kind contributions to many different communities and cultural groups. And I totally support this. We fly a range of flags which, you know, sort of include the Aboriginal flag which represent the sovereignty of First Nations over theisland, and other flags that represent the whole of our community. But when we look at individual national flags, that runs a risk of becoming sectarian. And I'm trying to avoid this. And so, you know, sort of the solution I see is to, instead of running individual country flags, you know, sort of at council, is to run the Harmony Day flag and support that as an expression of multiculturalism and, you know, sort of anti-racism in Australia. And I implore you to support the amendment.
Thank you. I have councillor Pandefany is the seconder of the amendment.
Yeah, again, I guess I just point to the census data, which is a really important reflection for us on the community that we live in. What will be the response to the Irish community, the Chinese community, the Scottish community, the Italian community when they come forth? And also would like to have their flags flown at our town hall. I think that we really, really need to seriously look at those statistics and numbers and approaches from our community in a holistic way. We are here to represent the community that we live in. We cannot become just like the council laws, like we need to represent the community and understand the cultural diversity of our community. And so, you know, next meeting, will we have a request for the Irish flag? Will we have a request for the Chinese flag? Yeah, so I would implore you to think about that and the numbers. Thank you very much.
I have councillor D'Souza on the amendment and then I'll go to councillor Seed.
Swear I won't be supporting any amendment of this nature. I support what councillor Rosenfeld said. Now, the thing, reason being is, it's not just a flag raising. This is a celebration of seventy-five years of freedom. This is a country that was born during a crisis and was born by just one vote in the United Nations. A vote which made a homeland for the Jewish people. A vote which gave those people who had suffered the Holocaust and who were ostracised, it gave them a home. Something they were searching for many, many years. David Ben-Gurion, our first Prime Minister, voted and built a nation where there was desert. Now we have fields. Where there was arid lands, we now have cultural hubs. I was privileged enough, when Mr, when BB or Mr Nathan, the US, some of you may know him, I was privileged to be in a group of business people to meet him. And he pointed out when Israel was born many years ago and he showed us the map. He said, all these people ostracised, no one wanted to do anything with us. Look at the map and all the red blobs. There's only a few countries, especially of course our friends in the US who helped. But then he showed the map today, well, it was five years ago, and the map had been transformed. The world that had avoided us, ostracised us, became a world that embraced us. Because we showed what can be done when people work together for a good outcome. Today, Israel leads the world in technology in particular, especially when it comes to IT, where small businesses are encouraged. Anyway, I'm maybe going off the point. The point is that this isn't, this is a one-off. This is a celebration of seventy-five years of a country that has fought to thick and thin. That has fought three wars to survive and now no longer just survives, it thrives. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Councillor Seed.
I still think it's a good idea to fly the harmony flag and it's a shame this didn't come up just as a motion on its own. Firstly, I'd just like to appeal to the mover of the original motion, whether he accepts point A and C to include it into his own motion. So you fly the flag, you write to the Jewish Board of Deputies and you also agree to fly the harmony flag on March twenty-first because it's not, it's a different day and we recognise multicultural Australia. I think it's the simplest way out and I like negotiation, like we all negotiate in multicultural countries. And going back to councillor Pandefany's point, I think it runs, there's, the nationalities run English, Australian, Irish, Chinese. Irish we celebrate on St Patrick's Day down at Coogee obviously, and we do a whole heap of stuff down there. The, unfortunately because of Covid, we usually do end the building of Big Street. We have the noodle markets to celebrate Chinese New Year. We couldn't do that this year because of Big Street. Once that's finished, we'll celebrate that. So we actually do follow celebrations of other nationalities. Councillor D'Souza brought the Maltese community down to Matherall to have a record, be recognised. So we do our best within the electorate. So I just wish that we could just move that up and we can all be at one and at peace and multicultural and we're all friends.
Thank you, thank you councillors. I had a hand up from councillor Chapel. Before we do that, just go, can I just confirm that you're proposing to councillor Rosenfeld for the incorporation of councillor Olive's, i-in addition to the words which are there?
So you mean ABC below is going to go below AMV, so become CDA?
Yes, okay.
They all become CDA.
Alright, thank you. So councillor Rosenfeld has incorporated that into his motion.
We have to, we have to deal with the amendment, don't we?
No, no, no.
He's, no, he's, I'm only going to agree to it if that's going to be in my.
Oh, okay. So, 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 well, okay. Do you accept the incorporation? No? Okay, thank you, that's fine. Councillor Chapel on the, on the amendment. I'll indulge you.
If the amendment loses, will you incorporate that into your motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Chapel.
Thank you Mr Mayor, and just to speak in support of the amendment, the Harmony Day flag is a unifying flag. I'm Belgian by background and our flag does not fly in our LGA and that's fine because I do feel represented by the Harmony flag. I enjoy the very many cultural events we have in our area. I note they don't all come with a requirement that our town hall fly the flag. We keep that for rare and special occasions. I thought when we rose, that when we lifted the Ukrainian flag here, I thought that was a really significant moment of importance. And I think the idea that each council meeting will add on a bunch more flags that we're going to fly up there is a little bizarre. I think it's appropriate that the Israeli flag is flown in our area by synagogues and schools and all these other locations where that is a relevant thing. But I think we should mention that this is a flag that is troubling for some people in our community, including Palestinian people and people from surrounding countries. I know that's not the intention of the motion and I recognise that. I think it's why writing to the Jewish Board of Deputies and showing that respect from council is an appropriate move. But I don't think flying the Israeli flag, the flag of a country that is currently engaging in annexation of land in a violent way that we have just recognised happened in Australia.
Sorry, I will hear the point of order. I've yet to identify one, but if you could please outline what your point of order is?
This is imputing, you know, the acts of another country and these are, this is slanderous statements. You know, annexation, et cetera, et cetera. It was too hurtful for me even to remember what it is.
Thank you councillor D'Souza. While I do understand the perspective where you're coming from, I believe that councillor Chapel is contributing to the debate in good faith. I rule that there is no point of order. Councillor Chapel, please continue.
I'm very happy to clarify that for councillor D'Souza. Those are words from the UN. Those are not necessarily my words. They're from the UN, from the UNHCR, from a number of international agencies. This is an international consensus on this body. You may not like that, but that's a problem. I think we should be looking to do stuff here that reflects our whole community and doesn't unnecessarily divide us. We can support Israeli Independence Day, we can support our local Jewish community, but we don't have to do it by making a divisive step that is going to be a source of pain for others.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I will now put the amendment. All those in favour of the amendment, move to Olive Pandefany, say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Aye.
I declare the amendment lost. Thank you. We'll now move to the motion as moved by councillor Rosenfeld. Are there any further?
And now we can move the bottom three on.
So councillor Seed, you're just suggesting incorporating the language. Councillor Rosenfeld accepts it. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers. All those in favour?
Aye.
All those against?
No.
I declare the motion carried, but there has been a call for a division from councillor Chapel. No, there was, there was a call for a division. Thank you. You ready Mr Kelly? Well, I don't want one, but there was a call. Okay. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Hamilton, councillor Hay, councillor Luxford, councillor Rosenfeld, councillor McCafferty, councillor Wilson, councillor Seed, councillor Burst, councillor D'Souza and the mayor. I declare that, oh, sorry, all those against? All those against, councillor Pandefany, councillor Veitch, councillor Chapel, councillor Olive. I declare the motion as moved, carried. Okay, we now move on to NM four slash twenty-three, notice of motion from councillor Rosenfeld, parking abroad, our reserve.
Are you going to ask for a second?
Councillor Rosenfeld, seconded by, seconded by councillor D'Souza. Councillor Rosenfeld as the mover.
Okay, yeah, this, this is the second time I've brought this particular issue. It hasn't, hasn't been for, for eleven months, but it's in a kind of a different form. So what I'm asking now, and just going back to the issue, I've had a lot of communication from residents that are concerned with parking availability at Maruba Beach on major public holidays and, and basically weekends where beach activity is high. And so basically what I'm doing now is I'm asking for a report on basically both the public holiday issue and weekends. And in that report, basically I'm happy to take into account the fact that some weekends, the weather forecast is obvious that there won't be a lot of beach activity. And so in that report, there is a, there's a facilitation for the opening of the park when there's likely to be high beach activity due to both public holidays and weekends with, with weather that is forecasted for large amounts of people visiting Maruba Beach. I'm getting a lot of feedback, not only just from residents but stakeholders, from surf club presidents and the like, repeatedly over, over what has been a pretty good summit to be honest. And I'm finding also residents telling me that people keep parking in their driveways who live nearby. And I really feel sorry for these guys. I actually, and it's completely unacceptable. And fair enough, two minutes, I'm off.
Fair play. Seconder of the motion, no. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Chapel.
Thank you Mr Mayor, I'd just like to speak against the motion. The idea we need this for major public holidays seems a little silly to me since we already seem to open it on major public holidays. I think council officers currently are making the right call. They're opening it when there's big surf festivals on, they're opening it on major public holidays. It's there as an overflow, but it's not always available. So it reduces some of that pool factor for people assuming that if you drive to Maruba, you can always get a park. If we start opening all of our parklands for parking, our whole city is literally just going to be in gridlock. We're going to have to have someone on the crossing every weekend trying to let people across because everybody's going to be driving around assuming they can park. You can't add enough parking for people to always get a park and you shouldn't try. I agree, the issue of parking across driveways is significant, but it's not solved by more parking. People are still going to do that. I do think we could possibly step up ranger patrols, do a little bit of a blitz, do a bit of an education campaign around that and I'd be very happy to support a movement like that.
I'd like to remind councillors that we are live and recording. Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Rosenfeld, would you like to close the debate?
I'm just going to say that it was not, it was not open on New Year's Day or Australia Day this year. It was open on Boxing Day, which I think council offices for, possibly because a lot of people went down, myself included, to watch the Sydney to Hobart. But it wasn't, it wasn't open New Year's Day or Australia Day. And that's actually when I got a lot of consultation from stakeholders in the area.
Thank you. There being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour?
Aye.
All those against? Yeah, there's been a call for a division. Okay, thank you. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Hamilton, councillor Hay, councillor Luxford, councillor Rosenfeld, councillor McCafferty, councillor Wilson, councillor Seed, councillor Burst, councillor D'Souza. Okay, well, it's, now we're in the middle, we're going to, all those against, councillor Pandefany, Nielsen Veitch, Chapel, Olive and Parker. Sorry. NM five slash twenty-three, notice of motion from councillor Olive, community surveys made available to councils on the hub. Moved councillor Olive, seconded by councillor Chapel, councillor Olive to move your motion.
Yeah, we, we get, the community, council puts out to the community a lot of surveys and we don't get to know what they are exactly. They come back in sort of a, a different form to which they, they go out. We, it would be handy if we were able to have access to what the actual surveys are because then we know, you know, sort of exactly what the residents are seeing and the questions that they're being asked. We get to do that in a timely manner. And if you do decide, you know, sort of that you're a resident and a councillor, but you, you do the survey, the survey yourself, that might raise some issues for you. And so you might tend to not do that, which is, you know, what I tend to, how I tend to feel about it. Um, and, uh, and I think, you know, sort of having to register and do that just creates, um, difficulties. It'd be so much easier if we just had these surveys on the hub and then we could have them, uh, uh, for, for our understanding. Of what the residents were facing in terms of questions from, uh, council.
Thank you. Councillor Chapel is the seconder. Okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Olive, I assume you don't wish to close the debate. Thank you. All those in favour? All those against?
Declare that carried.
Thank you. Uh, NM six slash twenty-three. Notice of motion for councillor Burst proposing wheelchair access mat at Frenchman's Bay. Moved councillor Burst, seconded councillor Rosenfeld. Uh, councillor Burst is the mover.
Uh, reserve the right.
Thank you. Councillor Rosenfeld.
Reserve the right.
Thank you. Councillor Sedd.
Uh, Mr Mayor, as much as I admire, uh, councillors who put out motions in their wards. Um, that's, that's right. Some people don't. I've never seen that from someone. But anyway, um, I just want to highlight, I need clarification because back in, uh, in the merril minute. That I proposed in, um, MM seventy-one slash nineteen was recognising more inclusive swimming options at Yarra Bay. In consultation with the Rainbow Club, Wind Gap and for a mat at Yarra Bay. Duncan Rennie came back with a report after he had consultation with St Vincent de Paul, Wind Gap, Rainbow Club and community consultation. In CS forty slash twenty, on the twenty-fifth of August in twenty twenty, that there would be increased accessibility. And, but there wouldn't be patrols by lifeguards at Yarra Bay. And there was six recommendations to make Yarra Bay an all-inclusive spot. Going by what the community consultation had given him. And he had asked for an allocation of a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars out of the twenty twenty-two budget. To, to improvements of Yarra Bay, including a mat as per the one at Melba. That is virtually a year ago and I haven't, and actually this reminded me that, I'm not saying this reminded me. But Frenchman's Bay, there was only going to be one at Yarra Bay because that's where Wind Gap, Rainbow Club do all their activities. On the Bicentennial Park and that's why we proposed to do it there. And there was going to be a mark, uh, map. So I'm not going to ask the, uh, director of, uh, city services, I'll put him on the spot. But is this included somewhere? Because it was included in the budget of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. And I'm asking if you can come back later, not on tonight, but whatever happened to that? Because it was actually, um, it was accepted by council. It was approved.
Um, what, 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 what I will do is provide the director of city services the opportunity to answer if he so wishes, otherwise he can take it on notice. Director of City Services.
Thank you. Through you, through you, sorry, Mr Mayor, um, I can confirm that we are now in possession of the mat, uh, to be installed at, at Yarra Bay. Um, we are waiting to install at the end of summer, given, not the mat in itself, but the complexities of working at Yarra Bay over summertime. The, the works, as you mentioned, does also include some accessibility upgrades to the car park. Uh, and the provision of accessible paths from the car park to the mat. Um, I, I would note in relation to this particular matter that, um, we have in that assessment, we did note that Yarra. Sorry, that, uh, Frenchman's Bay was not accessible, um, and therefore wouldn't qualify for a mat from the, uh. From the car park to the ocean. Additionally, that the ocean, um, in that, in that area, the rise and fall of the tide prevents a mat from being installed on the beach.
Thank you. Uh, are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I will now put the motion. Uh, councillor Boost, did you wish to close the debate? There, okay. All those in favour?
Aye.
All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Uh, NM, NM seven slash twenty-three. Notice of motion from councillor Veitch, pedestrian safety concerns at the corner of Stewart, Avoca, Bundock Streets. Moved councillor Veitch, seconded councillor Luxford.
Uh, thank you. Look, I think, uh, the speaker, Diane Nazarov spoke, uh, very, very well. I hope she made it quite clear. There is a warrant for this signalised crossing already as part of the, uh, Stewart to Bundock, uh, cycle path. However, what the community is really asking is that we want something in the next financial year. We're, we're writing to this, this motion is basically saying, let's write to the state government and try and get some funding just to get these signalised lights in. Um, a study was done following some motions a few years ago that showed that we could put in those traffic lights. Without the removal of, uh, any of the trees along that intersection. Um, and if we cannot get the signalised lights in the next financial year, let's get some kind of refuge, uh. On those, uh, you know, little crossings on, on Stewart and on Bundock, uh, on the corner of Avoca. Just so people can cross safely, because it can take years. Even if the cycle path is approved for full funding, construction funding. Uh, in the next few months, it could literally still take years, uh, for that to be built. It just means the kids still cannot, and, and adults can't cross there safely. So we're just trying to get something in, within the next financial year. Thank you.
You, councillor Luxford. Councillor Luxford is the seconder?
Yeah, I too was contacted, um, by the same people. So, um, the speaker spoke well. It's all there. We know there are issues. So, yeah, that's all I really need to.
Councillor Sedd has a question.
Uh, question to the, the, uh, director of city services. Avoca Street is actually, is that a state road? Stewart and Bundock are council?
Uh, that's, that's correct in relation to Avoca.
So, if anything, going along with councillor Veitch, we could virtually do something quick as possible. On Stewart and Bundock, because that is ours at council, whereas we have to fight for funds, I suppose, for, for Avoca Street to get lights. So, what I'm saying is, is it quicker that we just do go for it with council on Stewart and Bundock and then?
Sorry.
Thing is, if we go for the single light, sorry, it's a state road and we have to apply for the money. And as you know, with all the other things we've got coming up, it's very hard to get funds. So I'd rather get something done, if you know what I mean.
Um, through, through, through to the director of city services.
Thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor. Um, the, the manager of integrated transport has alluded to the fact that we will understand the success of the funding application. For the cycleway in the next, um, couple of months. Um, in saying that, you know, it's a matter for council to decide, um, whether, you know, the, the expense of, say, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. For two pedestrian refuge, um, is, is, um, considered in light that we may getting funding for signalised lights. So the signalised lights would void the need for pedestrian refuge.
Thank you. Councillor Olive.
Uh, yeah, just to the rele- relevant officer, could the, um, uh, Randwick Barracks development, um, postpone? The, uh, the cycleway and all the, all of those plans?
Through to the relevant officer.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, the, um, the part of the, um, defence, um, housing. Um, proposal along with, for the dwellings along Bundock Street. Um, the initial, um, indication is that they would, um, work, um, to, uh, design their development. To allow for the cycleway and potentially with that development, if the defence was, um. Uh, did consider that they were having a increased demand for, um, traffic movements and active, um, transport along that route. Um, we may be able to, um, seek some, uh, contributions from, from them towards, uh, funding that infrastructure.
I guess more my point was, um, uh, if we, if we did have the go-ahead, you know, sort of to actually build the cycleway. Um, would we, would, would we be doing that before defence have, um, uh, completed their development proposal plans? If they, uh, if they say, well, we want to do, you know, change traffic management in that, in the area? Would that cut across those particular plans and, you know, sort of would it be prudent to delay? Or, um, I, I, does that change things, I suppose?
Through to the director of city services. City services. City services, thank you.
Uh, through you, Mr Mayor, um, the, the cycleway would be, um, ready, uh, like, should, uh, funding become available in this, um, tranche in, in, in June, July. Uh, the cycleway will be ready for construction prior to the development.
Okay, so I take it we, we would just build it, yeah, and then, all right. Okay, but I, I just, I did want to actually add that, you know, sort of, um, that's a, a rat run through there, through Bundock and, and Stewart Street. With so many blind spots. And it seems like, you know, sort of, there's a, um, a, 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 a problem that we, uh. It, it's hard to measure the number of people who are not walking or using that, uh, you know, those cross streets. That would have otherwise used them. And, um, I think that, you know, sort of, uh, you know, there's a, in, uh, some of these situations. There's a keep away effect, you know, sort of, and so I think that has to be taken into consideration when we're looking at, you know, sort of, um. A, um, refuges in this particular case.
Thank you. Uh, are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers. Um, I'll now, uh, councillor Veitch to close the debate. No, thank you. All, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Uh, NM eight slash twenty-three notice of motion from councillor Veitch. Uh, regarding particularly the right to peaceful, non-violent protest in New South Wales and the rest of UNSW student. Uh, moved councillor Veitch, seconded councillor Nielsen. Councillor Veitch is the mover of the motion.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, look, uh, you, you all heard the, the speaker, I think. Uh, she's incredibly articulate and brave, uh, young woman. She's a third-year, um, art student at UNSW. Um, and I received an email from her quite late, uh, on a Sunday night, a couple of weeks ago. It was, it was the night before the deadline of motions and, uh, we exchanged a lot of texts. Pretty desperate for help, actually. Um, and, uh, and so I thought I would bring this motion, uh, to council, uh, and just sort of up, update it. Um, look, as, as a bit of a side note, we've all been celebrating Mardi Gras and World Pride. And, um, you know, at pretty much every one of those events, uh, you have the seventy-eighters. The seventy-eighters, like, I think there are about two hundred and fifty people arrested. And what they've also been, uh, telling me is that, and some of you might know this already, is that not only were they arrested, but, you know. Their names were published in the newspaper and many of those people, uh, were fired from their jobs, got evicted from their homes. Uh, and the repercussions of that were really appalling. And, um, you know, as we went to World Pride, uh, Interpride event at Town, Sydney Town Hall. And we sort of take Mardi Gras for granted, maybe, you know, living in Sydney. But for the people coming from all over the world who are members of, of World Pride, you, you just suddenly dawns on you. Um, wow, this is a big deal, like for World Pride to go into different countries. There is never any kind of public, uh, celebration of this and, uh, and it's still a criminal offence. So it just goes to show, the seventy-eighters have now been given the keys to the city, uh, by the Lord Mayor of Sydney. Uh, which is quite rare. And, you know, I think the people, the young people and the older people. Who were out protesting about climate war for housing, just be able to have a housing rights, are the people who will be lauded in future years. We should not be arresting them and we need to take the lessons of Mardi Gras and World Pride, uh, into consideration. Uh, they're ahead of their time and we should be supporting them, not arresting them.
Thank you. It was only two, two, two and nine. Um, the seconder, uh, councillor.
Yes, I would like to second this motion and I was incredibly impressed with the, uh, with the speaker that we had. And I think she was, uh, very unfortunately intimidated by the, um, police. And I think that she's a very impressive, um, student representative for her community, student body. And, um, I think that we should all be very strongly supporting the right to, um, to protest. As a democratic country. So I think we should, uh, support this motion.
Thank you. I have councillor D'Souza, then Pandefini, then Sedd, then McCafferty.
Mr Mayor, I'll be very quick. Australia, as I said earlier, is party to seven core international human rights treaties. The right to freedom of assembly and association is contained as articles twenty-one and twenty-two. But it is important to allow people to protest. It is important, we talked about the seventy-eighters. Yes, as the law evolves and changes, so also protests and the way protesters are treated is influenced and changes. Uh, I, 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 I fully support this young lady and I fully support what she was protesting against. But I also talked about another section, I think a section four, which allows governments who have signed the treaties. If they're of the view that, uh, laws have been compromised, et cetera, they can take action and they did in this case. So the question I put to her, which she didn't answer, but then she may have a reason, she mentioned the courts. Were you trespassing on Commonwealth land? Now she didn't answer that. But if she is trespassing on Commonwealth land, protest or no protest, it's a criminal act and she will be prosecuted. I'll just leave it at that, Mr Mayor, but I do support her right to freedom of speech and I support her right to protest. But where and when? That is what is in question here.
Uh, yes, I'll hear the point of order.
Um, just in terms of the information, it was on Martin Place. On a little bit of path that most people would consider to be in the public. It wasn't inside, it wasn't behind a fence, it wasn't breaking down a fence. We've all been up that, most people would have been up to Parliament or so, walked past the Reserve Bank. And it completely fills and looks like a piece of public land. So, uh, there, there would be no, it's not marked. And so I think that's unfair because there's no way of knowing that that was not just part of Martin Place.
Look, thank you. I'll take that as a point of clarification. Um, uh, I have a handout from councillor Pandefini.
Um, yeah, I'd just like to commend this motion, um, and also, you know, acknowledge that, uh, so many of the rights. That we enjoy in this room would not, uh, not only World Pride, but lots of the things like workers' rights. In large companies that people potentially may have worked for in this room. Um, wages, uh, you know, the teachers that have been marching, the nurses, the unionists. People who enjoy those benefits. These things would not have happened without peaceful protest. It is an embarrassment to see, uh, an arrest like this happen. Um, it's kind of reflective of the horrific things that are happening, uh, for women's rights across the world at the moment. And, um, I would like fully support this motion and commend, uh, uh, Senator Veitch and, uh, sorry, councillor Veitch. And also, um, Cherish for coming in and speaking so powerfully. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any, oh, sorry, uh, councillor McCafferty. It's councillor Sedd, then councillor McCafferty. Uh, you're happy to say to councillor McCafferty, councillor McCafferty?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, I'm speaking against this motion. Um, because the thing is that we all know that our political viewpoints do have consequences. Um, I myself have been involved in protests and at the, at the time of those protests, there were consequences as well. Um, and trespass is trespass and there are no ways, you know, Cherish, Koolerman's and other people that protested with her. Um, I salute her right to protest, but I also salute the right of the authorities to take what action they can. And, um, Crown land is Crown land and trespassing is trespassing. And it is not as if she and the seventy-eighters or seventy-niners didn't know that there could be potential consequences. And that was part of the right of passage, which they took in order to protest and in order to put their political point of view.
Thank you. Councillor Sedd.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I actually agree with all the principles of this motion. Because protecting the right for peaceful, uh, non-violent protest is what makes Australia great. Uh, the only issue I have is I understand the reasons why they brought the laws in was to protect roadways and buses. When three or four people was gluing themselves to the road and disrupting traffic, et cetera, for really no purpose whatsoever. Um, that was a very lot different to a protest march, you know, for the freedoms of people. And if I was, uh, Miss, uh, Cherish Koolerman, I'd actually be very upset that she got charged and fined. When a federal senator lied in front of the protest, in front of cameras. When a federal senator lied in front of the protest, in front of cameras, in front of everyone, got booed. And never got charged. I'd be more upset than why are we living in an egalitarian, we should be living in an egalitarian state. Where people have privilege because they're a senator, doesn't get charged. That's what upsets me more than anything. I don't understand why there's one rule for someone and one rule for someone else. That's what we should be debating.
I, look, I I ca- ca- I I've seen a hand up from councillor Pandefini. Councillor Pandefini has spoken. Under the rules of debate, you're not really, if you have a question or a clarification, it's it's just you've already spoken, that's in.
I will have a clarification, I didn't know that that was true, yeah, just a point of clarification. Um, the repercussions, as far as we know, that we're supporting here are coming in the middle of the night. To a young woman's house. So that's that's just to to make that point very clear.
Thank you. Councillor Chapel.
Um, thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, I would like to agree with the other people here who have recognised the fundamental right to peaceful protest. As the backbone of our union movement, as much of our civil rights movement, um indeed the basis under which we enjoy most of the freedoms we enjoy today. Um, and recognise how inherently that is linked not just to international human rights, but into freedom of speech. Which I think is something I've heard espoused by many people at this table before. Um, i- in terms of trespassing on the Crown, the area this arrest occurred in looks very much like public land. It's not enclosed, it's not um hidden away. Um, even if it is though, we are the Crown. We we own public land, that is actually ours. And one of the right reasons we have a fundamental right to protest on public land is because it is literally our land, we're not entering into private land. Um, in terms of a right of passage, I mean, I'm fairly sure in my university days, I went to not dissimilar protests to this. And I was not arrested in the middle of the night. Um, I, you know, there was police pushback, um and there was police violence against some people. But the idea that it's a right of passage to accept a clearly intimidatory midnight arrest. Um, I think is deeply concerning and um I don't think we can support that.
Uh, s- sorry, coun- councillors or councillors will be heard in silence. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, uh to close the debate, councillor Veitch? No, no further, okay, I'll now put it, all those in favour? All those against? I declare, okay. All those uh in fa- councillor Kelly, all those in favour? Councillor Kelly, I don't mean to, I don't me- I don't mean to de- but I don't mean to demote Mister Kelly in such a fashion, my apologies. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Pandefini, Nielsen, Veitch, Chapel, Olive, Wilson. Sid, um, all those against? Councillor Hamilton, Hay, Luxford, Rosenfeld, uh McCafferty, Sid and D'Souza. Sorry, Burst and D'Souza. And myself, I declare the motion lost. Okay, thank you. Uh, N M nine slash twenty three notice of motion from councillor Pandefini, Australia Day Citizenship twenty twenty four. And staff arrangements, uh moved councillor. Moved councillor Pandefini, councillor Pandefini.
Sorry, um.
I'm tired.
Yeah, I just, I don't have a lot to say. I think um Any Barb covered it. Um, I did get a lot of the copy of this motion from Wallara Council, from the Liberal um. Uh, mayor who um successfully passed this last month. And um I would also like to make mention of the countless councils that surround us. That have a similar um Wallara. Yeah, um. Sorry, just. Yeah, um, yeah, so. And also, uh, yeah, chief also, um, uh. Follow on from the uh Honourable Andrew uh Giles Giles M P. Who announced this update to the Australian Citizenship Ceremonies Code. Um, this past twenty sixth of January, we saw um white collar workplaces led by major law firms. The four big consultant firms, firms such as Canva. Um, and uh P W C, Telstra, Woodside Energy, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Follow um similar suit and not um hold a public holiday on uh the twenty sixth of January. Um, we also have Labour. Um, pushing the uh vote, uh voice to Parliament this year. Which um, you know, is has brought a lot of attention to this issue. So um I would urge um the councillors to reflect upon what Barb has said. And also think about um the meaning of this day to the elders that we ho- and the uh community that we hold very dear. In this um L G A, uh and I urge you to support this motion. Thank you.
Uh, seconded councillor D'Souza. Um, I have a hand up from councillor Sid. Uh councillor, oh sorry, councillor D'Souza, do you wish to se- speak to the motion as a seconder?
Mister Mayor, reserve my right.
Thank you. Councillor Sid, as.
Mister Mayor, what I'm proposing is that we defer this motion. Um, I'll give you the reasons why. Uh, particularly actually firstly, I I don't agree with mo- I do agree with moving the date. It doesn't particularly worry me. Actually, I think the most appropriate date for our L G A would probably be the eighteenth of January. When Arthur Philip landed at Yarra Bay and actually met the First Nations people on the beach and they showed him where the fresh water was. Which is an historical part, that's why four years ago I asked for Yarra Bay to be declared a national and state heritage. Uh, place and I think it's coming up. We received something on the hub to say that that's getting, should be approved very soon. Which I think is a very fantastic day to show how we all get together. But also doesn't allow for the the u- the industries that the councillor mentioned that uh have changed their. Um, the public holiday are all white collar places. There's no, we've got, the majority of our workers on a public holiday are outdoor staff. And I can't see to deny them of earning their double time or their uh penalty rates. So I think we just need to wait till we have the new general manager. We can discuss it, we can brief on it. We haven't got a report coming back from. We've heard from Any Barb and I appreciate what Any Barb said, but we haven't heard from the Land Council. I'd love to hear their reviews as well. Um, so I really think to do this properly and to do it. Uh, cause maybe we should vote on not doing anything whatsoever on Australia Day. No, nothing at all. Well, we can't decide any of that until we discuss it thoroughly and we talk to all the stakeholders.
No, 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 ju- ju- no, uh ho- ho- hold on, hold on. Okay, so just just a couple of things. Um, councillor Veitch has sought a clarification from the mover of the amendment. It's it is a matter for councillor Sid if he'd like to answer that in his view.
So the point, my point is that because they're only asking for reports and we're not deciding on tonight. That all I'm saying is if we defer it till we have the new G M and he can clarify the rules around what council rules are on having a day off. And um uh not having the public holidays, that, we have no idea whether um. If five people decide they're gonna not, they're to work on that day, we have to open up the thing. That's why the reports. So what I'm saying is, when, um, I wouldn't wanna put that on the acting G M, so I'm asking for, can we please wait? Till the new G M starts next month, it's only a month away. If we can defer it till then, we can talk to the stakeholders in the meantime. We can ask for all the reports we want, we can have proper briefings. And all I'm asking is for a little bit of time to do it properly and do it with respect and do it well.
Um, he, so, thank you, so no, so councillor Burst indicated that he was gonna second it some time ago. Councillor Sid, just to clarify for the meeting, uh that you are moving that the matter be deferred for future discussions. Uh, with uh councillors and the incoming general manager.
Put to a briefing, to defer it, put to briefings, we work out how we actually would like to do it in a pro- in a briefing.
Yep.
Then take it to council with the new.
Yep, yep, thank, thank you very much. Second of councillor Burst. Uh councillor Burst is the seconder of the amendment, do you wish to speak to it? Okay, thank you. Um, uh, wh- what I will just say with the indulgence of um the the meeting. By virtue of councillor Pandefini being the mover of the motion, I'm being a bit awkward, having to go up and down again. Um, look, I do support um the moving uh of the date uh as it relates to Australia Day. However, I do think that any consideration uh of council activity should really be done in a holistic um way, rather than sprung on the floor. Um, as well as having an idea of the implication around um council events as well as operational decisions. Um, and I would suggest that this is probably not the manner in which I would like to go about um uh undergoing this deliberation. As such, I support the amendment as moved by councillor Sid. Um, okay, councillor Veitch would like to speak against?
Yeah, look, I think this is very clear. There was a man, you know, there was a law passed, I think, perhaps by Prime Minister John Howard. I can't remember. There was never any requirement to conduct citizenships. Uh, on on January twenty sixth. It's not as if this has been happening for all time. That was a political decision by a liberal state government. And I honestly don't know why there are many people in here who now sort of say, oh, well, why is this a big issue? It it's never been something that we have done. My, can you wait, do you mind waiting till I finish? Um, so, so that was a political decision at a time. And I I I have to say, that was the government, there are many members of that government who turned their backs off the apology. And who are now saying, I regret that. And it's the same with marriage equality and a bunch of different things. We are now having to go back and change. A bunch of laws that were made by an extremely ultra-conservative government. Is it two minutes? I don't think so. So the part about the staffing is already calling for a report. I mean, I cannot imagine anyone here who votes for that to to go and and, you know. Speak to Any Barbara and say, she will be heartbroken. I find it disgusting.
Thank you. Councillor Chapel. So, sorry, actually I apologise. Councillor Luxford did have a question, then councillor Chapel.
Um, just a question through to the relevant um officers and I and I don't know, maybe David Kelly is. The longest serving here, uh or perhaps even Kerry. Um. As far as I know, Randwick Council has been holding citizenships on Australia Day from time and memoriam. So can somebody please, um, you know, clarify that for me?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, from someone uh from time and warium, um, I I believe that is the case. Uh, ever since council, ever since I've been at council, yes.
Thank you, councillor Chapel.
Sorry, I'd just like to speak against the amendment primarily because um this change is supporting. Moving the date of citizenship ceremonies, um and then doing the planning around that, the consultation around that. Working out if it can work to move the staff date. It might not work, fine, no worries. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, we can't do it. Other pla- workplaces can or they can for some staff. If we can't offer that because of the realities of our workforce, then that's what the report will say. Um, likewise, engaging with the Land Council, i- it's in there, engaging with the community, all the elders, talking to everyone. That that's actually the plan that is there. Um, I'd like to say, I don't know how any, many other people in this room are migrants to this country like I am. Um, I was naturalised in Australia, um and I became an Australian citizen. And it would pain me greatly had that ceremony been on a day that is a source of such pain for so many people. But there's no reason to put that on new people to this country, to make them part of that historical legacy. We can change it to a different day with very little change, the 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 change was made in twenty seventeen to require it on that day. That was a political decision by the Morrison government. It's been reversed by the Labor government. Who rightfully see that as an impingement on councils' rights to do right by their local First Nations communities, which is what we should do here.
Thank, there being no further speakers. No, it's an amendment, it's an amendment. Um, there being no further speakers on the amendment, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? I declare the amendment carried. Okay, thank you. Now to the motion as moved by councillor Sid. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers on the amendment, uh sorry, on the motion now. Um, I'll now put it. Uh councillor Sid, you don't need to close the debate. No, all those in favour? Uh, it appea- it appea- it appea- it appears by. Uh, no, not necessary, councillor Sid. Um, all those in, it's th- tha- thank you councillor Sid. All those in favour of the motion as moved by councillor Sid, all those. All those against? I declare the motion carried. Thank you. Um, we now move to. Uh, N M ten slash twenty three notice of motion from councillor Chapel, improving drainage options on Anzac Parade. Between Lawson Street and Hillary Parade, moved councillor Chapel. Do I have a second? I second councillor D'Souza. Councillor Chapel is the mover of the motion.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Just very briefly, I I think the speaker who spoke to this motion um told it all. Um, the pictures that I've seen from this uh street are genuinely shocking with water. Kind of up above people's knees and locals frantically trying to clean the drains themselves. Um, so the report, what I'm asking for is is a proper investigation of drainage options for this area. Um, I'd also really like, um, it was raised by the speaker, to be on the table, the regular cleaning of this street. In such a way that it removes the debris that's going into the drains. I know that that's. With sweeping, yeah, which, manual sweeping, which sounds like an option. I I haven't put that in the motion, I'm happy to amend it in there. I'd like just just to seek a comment from any of the council offices about whether that that's feasible, that we can add that into our operations.
Uh, through to the Director of City Services.
Through you, Mister Mayor, uh we can consider that in in bringing back the report on the solutions, um as sort of um intermediate measures.
Thank you. Councillor D'Souza is the second up. Thank you. Uh, I have a hand up from councillor Sid, then councillor Hay.
And thank you for being uh a southward attention to us all, but the uh reason why. The um couns- uh Ryan Zambit has been working on this because of the landslide. The last couple of weeks and only just a couple of days ago, or yesterday actually. We received an email to say that the network had CCTV cameras going through the the actual um. Stormwater pipes right in front of their places. They're doing a short term fix with a graded pipe. Uh, if you wanna back me up, you can. Uh, they're also doing a long term solution, which needs to be investigated. Solution comprises of a greater network. Uh, and they have discussed this with the residents. Um, uh, is it one one eight seven? Is that where we were talking about? Oh, okay, one one eight seven has also been just been in discussions with Ryan Zambit. So we are actually doing something about it and the, um, to go back a few years. And I think it was councillor Nielsen, when she was the mayor, where we, yeah, this is to the motion. We, we cannot, we actually thought about, people in uh Coogee, Randwick and other suburbs were complaining that the leaves were blocking their drains. And asked for sweeping of the of the streets. And we came to the conclusion, we just couldn't afford to do it. We don't have the staff to do it, we couldn't afford to do it. So we had the promotion, when councillor Nielsen was the mayor, that, um. So, uh, adopt the drain, adopt the drain, clean the drains, please help us to help yourselves, just sweep it up. There's no way that we can, you either cut down the trees and stop the leaves, or you spend five minutes to pick up the the refuse from your own drain. And it actually was quite successful, it was a great uh communications thing, went around all the L G A. But unfortunately, as time's gone by, we just can't afford it. Um, so I can't agree with that. But we are looking at the su- uh the stormwater. So we are doing it, it's all under control.
Uh, so, so thank you. I have a procedural motion moved councillor Burst, seconded by councillor Hay. Uh, to extend the meeting by, no, we're gonna say thirty minutes and we're gonna try and do it. Uh, all those in favour? All those against? I declare that carried. Um, okay, I have a hand up from councillor Hay, councillor Hay.
Um, I'd like to uh add an amendment on.
Um, I'd like to, uh, add an amendment onto the motion if I could ask Mister, uh, Kelly to add an email. Yes, uh, basically, we're just adding another area. This was brought to my attention on Tuesday night, so it was after the deadline, so I couldn't really. Yeah, yeah. Well, this is, this is, uh, the intersection of Lancel Street, right near Southern Cross Drive, is a particularly, uh, bad intersection for this. Specifically on Tuesday night, we recall at the end of a tour with Mister Clark, it held it down with rain. In the middle of that, uh, the problem, the. Lancel Street flooded to about, uh, half a metre high. And there were two cars that got stuck in that. And it caused a massive traffic jam in the suburb. Now, Lancel Street should not be used as. A major thoroughfare into into and out of, uh, Randwick City, but unfortunately. Uh, there's a, there's an off-ramp on Link Road, uh, from Southern Cross Drive and it is used frequently. And, uh, frankly, i- it's, uh, it's. Because of that makes it one of our most important roads and we need to do this. It is on the boundary of the city of Sydney, so we'll need to work collaboratively. Collabor- collaboratively with them. And, uh, I I'd like to add this, so not not, uh. Not taking away from councillor Chapel's motion, just added as an as another paragraph.
You do have a, well, sorry, does the mover of the motion accept the amendment? She does, okay. Um. Uh, it's now incorporated into the motion. Councillor Olive, you now wish to speak on the motion?
Uh, yeah, I I just, I wish to speak, I suppose, on the motion, but just to respond to the sweeping i- idea. That, you know, sort of it seems to me that, you know, sort of if, um. Uh, not sweeping is going to cause flooding, then that's going to cost more in the long run anyway, but. I would have thought if there, if you could pinpoint, um, uh, critical flood locations. And so you're not sweeping everywhere, but just, you know, sort of, um, you know, at one location or another location, that wouldn't cost very much at all. But, you know, I mean, I'd be, I I ask council officers whether that's the case or not.
Yep, thank you. So we have. Councillor Hal- councillor Veatch would like to debate the matter. Thank you, councillor Veatch.
Yeah, look, I totally support the motion. I too, I mean, everyone. Leaves a tiny bit of the problem. The problem is actually climate change and we are getting massive rainfall events. You, you know.
Councillor Veatch, please continue.
The massively heavy downpours we are getting are due to the rising temperatures of our air temperatures and our ocean temperatures. This is well documented. They create massive, you know, uh, humid air masses that are like that. These these rain events just sit on an area and the rain pours down. I know there's a very untechnical way of describing it. But this is what we've been seeing. Ev- everywhere. We're continuously, I've got, I've got somewhere, I'll probably have a motion next week.
Uh, look, I'm gonna hear the point of order. If you're concerned about time.
Wind, I'm happy to wind up, but leaves are only part of the problem. The problem is the rain.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no.
I just pointed out, the report's actually been written. Ryan Zammert has done that report, so why are we asking for a report that's been done? I just pointed out, it's written there, we got it yesterday, all councillors.
Okay, so, so, so. Ca- councillor Sed, is that a rhetorical question or is that a question? Okay, okay. Through to the director of city services, is there a response to this particular motion? Proposed motion.
Yeah, through through you, Mister Mayor, it's a matter for council, uh, I suppose, to decide on that.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Chapel to close the debate. Councillor. Thank you. Councillor Chapel to close the debate. Councillor Chapel.
Thanks, everyone. Um, I did see the report that came in after I had submitted my motion. It is a good report. Um, I note from the residents' comments that there have been a number of commitments from council. That's really positive. Um, I would love to see them in the report. I'd love to ke- see us keep an eye on this and I'd love to see us support the residents. Who have had a pretty awful time of this this street, yeah.
It's it's, that's the intention. All those in favour? All those in favour? All those against? Declare the motion carried. Thank you. Um, N M eleven slash twenty three. Notice of motion from councillor Chapel, council, webcasting of council meetings. Councillor Chapel is the mover of the motion. Do I have a second up? Seconded D'Souza.
Thanks, councillor D'Souza. I'll be very brief. Um, this is all information from the Of- Office of Local Government's own website. I haven't made this up. There's a large number of councils that are already using webcasting rather than just audio casting. Um, because it's more accessible to their residents, it's more compelling. Um, it's more interesting for communicating stuff and we might get more than a handful of people listening along to our streams. Um, bringing democracy to the community through the use of tel- audiovisual technology is a very simple concept and I hope you'll support the motion.
Councillor D'Souza is the second up. Thank you. Councillor Hay.
Um, I I rise to speak against the motion. Um, I I. A large part of what I do is, uh, in in my, in my, in my professional career is. Uh, involves webcasting court proceedings. Um, a motion like this would ea- could easily, uh, cost around fifty thousand dollars a year to bring into action. Uh, it's not, um. I I've had a look at the the current, uh, figures that we're getting on on YouTube for. Playing back the audio only of our proceedings and you've averaged about a hundred views. So I I don't see that there's a huge, uh.
Hundred two million.
I I don't see that there, I don't see there's a huge demand for it. But the bigger issue is that, hm?
Please continue, councillor Hay.
The bigger issue is that, uh. We have a good, uh, collaborative, uh, council at the moment and people, uh. Frankly, uh, discussing their views, but we're not, uh, hamming it up, we're not playing to the camera. Um, if if, quite frankly, uh. If you start, uh, broadcasting the facilities, that there is always that danger that we end up becoming, um. A a lot more for the show than for the community, uh, in terms of having a, uh, free and and frank debate. So, um, anyway, I can't, uh, support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? No, uh, okay, uh, well, councillor Chapel, she is the mover of the motion.
Just in reply, just to note that, uh, this is about bringing back a report. So if the report says it's hundreds of thousands of dollars and we can't afford it. But we just gave thirty thousand dollars to a cricket club. I'm sure we can afford, if it's fifty, to make our council meetings accessible. And a hundred views is exactly the point I was trying to make. There are lots more people in our L G A. Who ca- who are impacted by the decisions we make here and they should be involved.
Thank you. Um, there being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Okay, there's been a call for a division. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Sorry, thank you. All those in favour? Okay, we have councillor, uh, Pandefini, Nielsen, Veatch. Chapel, Olive, Sed and D'Souza. Okay, all those against councillor, uh, Hamilton, Hay, Luxford, Rosenfeld, Macafferty, Wilson, Burst. And the mayor, I declare the motion lost. Okay, thank you. Um, N M twelve slash twenty three notice of motion from councillor Chapel, rent bidding. Councillor Chapel.
Thank you. Sorry, they're all in a row. Um, this is just a very modest, um. Um, motion just to propose that the recent changes that were made by the New South Wales Liberal Government, which were unanimously supported. That prohibit rent bid- bidding in an attempt to keep rents down for, um. Renters in our communities, um, that we communicate some of those changes to our residents so they know about them and can take advantage of them.
Thank you. Counts, is there a second up? Seconded councillor D'Souza. Are there any further speakers? Oh, councillor D'Souza is the second, no, councillor Burst?
I would just like to commend the New South Wales, uh, state government for for. Making this action and, uh, making it better for, um, for renters in New South Wales. I think it's a great initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Okay, all those in favour? All those against? Okay, I declare that carried. Um. Uh, okay, N M thirteen slash twenty three. Notice of motion from councillor Pandefini restricting advertising on council owned sites. For companies involved in the extraction slash sale of fossil fuels. Councillor Pandefini, moved. Seconded councillor Nielsen.
Thanks. Um, I'll just note that this is the second time that this motion has been brought back. Um, and that, uh, specific councillors found it, um, difficult to, um. Uh, ma- found the mo- the previous motion too complicated and too difficult. Um, so I have simplified it here to, um. To nominate that it is the extraction and sale of fossil fuels that, um. We, uh, restrict in advertising. I found the scoffing with regards to anything mentioning to climate change extraordinary. Um, considering we have, um, councillors running for state election, uh, currently. We have a serious, serious issue regarding, um. The the issues that climate change has brought upon our council currently. And the cost of that on the community is huge. And the support by state governments and federal governments is being acknowledged. Why can't that trickle down to local government? I will also note the scoffing with regards to the, um, statistics. On our area. The median age in this area is mid thirties. Is mid thirties, is mid thirties. That is not to be.
Sorry, ca- councillor Pandefini, if you could just stop for a second. No, no, that's, that's all right.
To me, this is. Unbelievable that we do not acknowledge who we actually are representing. At the federal elections, sixty six percent of those people. Voted for action on climate change. So I would urge you to please consider the very basic request here. Which specifies what I'm talking about. Which follows on from multiple coun- councils that are acknowledging what is happening. Um, and support this motion.
Thank, th- th- thank you. The second of the motion, it was councillor Nielsen. Okay, are there any other speakers? Councillor Sed.
Actually, Mister Mayor, I agree with this because. Even though I got a challenge that I scoffed the last one, and the reason why I scoffed the last one, because it was very generalised. And it said the banning of all ads that had companies that use fossil fuels. And as I tried to point out, that. Plastic bottles, solar panels, anything else was made of fossil fuels, which is petroleum, which is oil. That's all I said. It's very hard to generalise and it's very hard to ban all those materials. Whereas this one is very specific. It just says extraction of sale and the sale of fossil fuels. So I agree with it wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Are there any? Okay, um, okay, there being no further speakers, um. Councillor Pandefini, do you wish to close the debate? No? Okay, all right. Councillor Pandefini does not wish to close the debate. All those in favour? All those against? There's been a call for a division. All those. That's why I paused, um. Mister Kelly, could you please pull up the division counter? Otherwise, we deal with a rescission motion. I haven't jammed a vote on anyone when they need to go to the bathroom. All those in favour, please raise your hand. All those against? All right, I declare. So we actually need, we actually need to, sorry, we need to go to a vision. So we'll do that again, my apologies. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Okay, we have councillor Pandefini, councillor Nielsen, councillor Veatch. Councillor Chapel, councillor Olive and councillor Sed. All those against? Councillor Hamilton, councillor Hay, councillor Luxford. Councillor Rosenfeld, councillor Macafferty, councillor Wilson, councillor Burst. Councillor D'Souza and the mayor, I declare the motion lost. Thank you. Uh, notice of motion fourteen slash twenty three, no, uh, from councillor Pandefini proposing an annual art exhibition during the Sydney Mardi Gras. Councillor Pandefini, could you please move your motion? Do I have a second up? Seconded councillor Veatch. Councillor Pandefini, please proceed.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, and I would like to commend the council on the wonderful World Pride event that we had down, um, at Randwick. Uh, last week that a few of us attended. Um, every year, um, we have been marking, uh, and celebrating Mardi Gras. Um, and I would like to, uh, propose that we, uh, put up an event. That is more, uh, sorry, an art exhibition that allows, uh, council to more deeply delve into. The, um, issues and ideas around the Mardi Gras. You know, it's wonderful to have a celebration. But having something up, um, for, uh, multiple weeks. Will mean that we have more of the community able to attend, more of the community, uh, able to engage. Uh, during World Pride, I went to an event at the Art Gallery of New South Wales. Um, and there were eighteen thousand people present. This is, um, an issue that is, uh, very important to many people in this community. Um, and I'll also note that in the, um, very, uh, well. Responded to call out regarding arts and culture, we, uh, have. You know, over seventy percent of the people that responded to, um, the arts and culture. Uh, proposal saying that they found, um, that there was not enough going on in this. Um, L G A, um, that they would like to see more exhibitions. And that they would like to have more, um, arts and cultural events. So I would urge you to, uh, uh, support this motion. Into an annual art exhibition during the Sydney Mardi Gras Festival. Um, yeah, and I've just got one amendment, um. Today that I sent through and that was for A and that was just to change the date, which I incorrectly put in there as June, but that should be February or March.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor Veatch is the second up.
I'll speak briefly, yeah, look, I think it's a, it's a fantastic mo- uh, motion, I fully support it. And look. There's also so many people who come and visit our L G A during, uh, February, during Mardi Gras period. And so it would be great to sort of channel all the people. Um, who come to visit, uh, to also engage in sort of some cultural activities, go and see an exhibition and so on. And I think this would be really well supported. It would be a a a great initiative.
Uh, I have a hand up from councillor D'Souza, then councillor Sed.
Mayor, I'd like to ask the mover. Uh, do we control what art will be part of this art exhibition? Are we gonna leave it to others? And then I'll speak on the button.
It would be organised by the council, so.
Okay, so. I'll leave it at that. But in saying that, Mister Mayor, I wanted to compliment you and the council on the. Wonderful activities we had at Coogee and the, all the inclusiveness and acceptance which came through. When I was there, people in our council, Mister Mayor, want to see that the council is inclusive and represents everyone. No matter who they love, no matter what they ident- identify with, no matter where they live. As I think the word engage was used, that's exactly what the activities did. They informed, they inspired and they engaged our community. Now, thank you, Mister Mayor. I'll be supporting councillor Pandefini on this one.
I have a hand up from councillor Sed, then councillor Burst.
It's actually a question and a point of order that, um. Now, if I remember correctly the rules of motions, if you don't ask, if you're not asking for a report. And you don't put a cost in, you can't put a motion through. Um, all costings, or anything that doesn't ask for a report has to have a cost.
Just, just hold on, on the point of order. And I will rule on the point of order and I invite the acting general manager, if at any point that he disagrees with my interpretation of it. Under the code of meeting practice. Under the code of meeting practice, a notice of motion which does not identify a source of funding will automatically trigger a report um in, in order to do, in, in order to do it. So I, I, I don't see unless there is any disagreement from the acting general manager, any grounds to rule the notice of motion out of order by virtue of the fact that it will trigger a report, by virtue of not identifying the source of funding. Uh, councillor Burst.
I actually will be supporting this motion. I think it's a great motion and um the New South Wales Liberal State Government has shown, has led the way with the new um Art Gallery of New South Wales. It's a fantastic site. I've enjoyed my visits there. I've been there twice now. Um, the old building's been uh uh rectified and the, the new buildings that's been put up. Um, it just shows that New South Wales Government is leading the way in arts and, and culture in New South Wales. So um yes, I certainly will be supporting this and um the positive things that our, our governor's put forward. Thank you.
Uh councillors, all, all councillors will be heard in, in, sorry, thank you councillors, all councillors will be, thank you. There's nothing in the code of meeting practice which prevents reference to an election. If I was enforcing that as a rule, it would be impossible. Councillors, than- thank you very much. I know that there are keen people who would like to get out of here at, at a semi-reasonable hour. Um, could we please continue? Are there any f- yes, are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers. I take it that councillor Pandefini does not wish to close the debate? No, thank you. I'll now put the question. All those in favour?
Aye.
All those against?
Aye.
Declare that carried. Thank you very much. Okay, NM fifteen slash twenty-three, notice of motion councillor Veitch, motion for the twenty twenty-three National General Assembly preventing greenwashing and promoting ethical and climate positive investments in local government super funds. Councillor Pandefini. Sorry, my apologies, councillor Veitch.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, look, there's, there's been a lot of issues with uh greenwashing uh in recent months especially. There's an ASIC, active ASIC investigation into corporate greenwashing. Uh, and some of you may have seen the uh programme on Four Corners a couple of weeks ago, carbon uh, carbon colonisation. What came up in that report is that um, uh the lo- the New South Wales Local Government Superfund uh has been uh sort of unfortunately rolled up with a sca- a carbon credit scheme that has been shown to be extremely uh shonky and questionable. But when I sort of looked further into it, the sort of issue of the carbon credits to cover the active super, um, you know, operational carbon emissions is just really the tip of the iceberg. Um, active super and uh indeed most of the other local government super funds uh are actually invested in companies like Santos, Woodside, BHP. Uh, some are even invested in weapons manufacturers and, and tobacco. It's a, it's a real problem and, you know, part of the problem is also is that, you know, certainly in the case of active super, uh it is very much promoting itself as a company uh that is a green uh ethical super company. Now, and I don't even think they have an ethical or green option. The issue with super funds is that while many do have an ethical or green uh option for members, the majority of super fund members use the default, use the default. And the default is being invested in fossil fuels. Uh, in the case of Australian Super a couple of years ago, uh it was revealed that even the ethical funds were being, and green funds were being invested in fossil fuel companies. This is a motion going to the uh Australian Local Government Conference in Canberra. We are try- we have a target in Randwick, if, if you just, let me finish, one, one second, I'll, I'll wrap up of sixty percent mi- emissions reductions across our entire community by twenty thirty. Now, can you imagine if we could be part of a push to get active super to divest its funds from these companies? We would, uh, all of our staff who have funds invested in this, which they are required to under the award, it's one of the weird awards that still requires them to uh be invested in a particular fund. In, in one stroke, we could actually probably uh cut down a number of emissions from our own target. So let's walk the talk, uh and I really hope you can support this motion to go to conference.
Thank you. Uh, the second of the motion, uh, who can, can I have a second of the motion? Second councillor Olive. Councillor Olive, do you wish to speak to it? Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Veitch, I take it you don't need to close the debate as there is none. All those in favour?
Aye.
All those against?
Aye.
Okay, Mister Kelly, could you please pull up the division counter? Thank you. All those in favour? Councillor Pandefini, Nielsen, Veitch, Chapel, Olive, Wilson, Sed, D'Souza and Parker. All those against? Councillor Hamilton, Hay, Luxford, Rosenfeld, McCafferty and Burst, I declare the motion carried. Okay, thank you. Uh, uh, okay, we now move to, hold on. Yes, uh, we are now returning to, um actually, no, I'd actually request a um, a procedural motion for an extension of time. I was overly optimistic. Another thirty? Okay, uh, ca- couns- councillor Burst has moved a procedural motion for an additional, I, I'm gonna say until thirty-five, so till twelve thirty? Yep, till twelve thirty. Moved councillor Burst, second councillor D'Souza. All those in favour? All those against? We have a procedural motion for an extension. All those in favour?
Aye.
All those against?
Aye.
Okay, there is a division as to, alright. Okay, thank you. O- okay, thank you. Mister Kelly, can you please bring up the uh counter? Alright, thank you. Sorry, did I call you councillor Kelly again? My apologies. Mister K- okay, all those in favour of the procedural motion to extend for half an hour?
Aye.
Alright, okay, so all those in favour? For half an hour? Okay, alright, we have, okay, no, okay, we have councillor Hamilton, councillor Nielsen, councillor Veitch, councillor Hay, councillor Chapel, councillor Olive, councillor Wilson, councillor Sed, councillor Burst, councillor D'Souza, all those against? Okay, councillor Luxford, alright, thank you. I declare that carried. Um, and councillor Rosenfeld. Thank you, slowing us down. Okay, we return to MM six slash twenty-three renewed concerns regarding Meritons' proposal for an amend for Little Bay Cove development. Um, and the debate on that, um councillor Sed, councillor Sed? Councillor Sed, I believe you had an amendment. Thank you. The original wording in point B. No. No, no, sorry, sorry, no, there is an error there. Sorry, uh councillor, sorry, Mister Kelly. B, note the confid- it's supposed to be the original motion. So point B, note the inappropriate confidentiality requirements for council to be provided details. Yeah, inappropriate be reinstated. Yep, thank you, okay. Um, councillor Sed, I support the um, the amendment and reincorporate it back into the mayoral minute. Um, is there any further debate? Yes.
So to my understanding, that when we paused the debate on this motion, it was because we hadn't clarified point E and the ti- and the, the dates associated with that. And now we've come back, we've retabled it and we haven't touched point E or someone has uh cleared up point E for us. And then we've come back and put inappropriate in, but we'd already passed all of that. And it's an oxymoron to say that it's inappropriate to be confidential when you're doing uh this type of work. It's
No, ha- 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 having, ha- ha- having con- considered, ha- having considered my position in light of the break, um, I accept the proposed wording which is presented on the screen with the words, the, the retention of point B, note the inappropriate confidentiality requirements for council to be provided details about the application or be, to be able to provide technical comments, including comments on the merits of fast-tracking the proposal and supports the comments of local government New South Wales in regards to, so in regards to no, no, so, so ca- so councillor, councillor Sed? Councillor Sed, um, and supports the comments of local government New South Wales in regards to, is, is removed? So we're going back to the original text with the notice of motion. Yep, so that's removed. Thank you. Okay, and point E reaffirms its commitment to the changes contained in the Rammer Comprehensive Planning Proposal twenty twenty-two that contained identical controls to the previous master plan at Little Bay. I accept the words-
Can I just add another clarification in terms of the wording in point B? Note the inappropriate confidentiality requ- confidentiality requirements before council will be provided details. That makes it clear, it doesn't it, for anybody who's actually reading this?
Fine, I, I, I don't have any, I don't-
Note the inappropriate confidentially, confidentiality requirements. Note the inappropriate confidentiality requirements.
For. Be, be, be for or?
Before council can be provided-
That, that's fine. I'm happy to incorporate before instead of for.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Alright, thank you. I'll now put the mayoral minute. All in, all those in favour of the mayoral minute which is directly in front of you? All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
All those against? Okay, I declared the mayoral minute carried. Okay, thank you. Uh, we now move to, just before I do, I just wanna confirm that there are no other items. Okay, so we move to questions, they just get read and noted? Okay, yep, can I just have a mover that the questions on notice, QN one slash twenty-three, QN two slash twenty-three and QN three slash twenty-three are read and noted? Okay, move. Okay, ca- councillor Hamilton has a question. Can, can you just identify which one? Okay, can I just get someone to move QN one and QN two are read and noted? Move Chapel, D'Souza. All those in favour, all those against? Carried. Uh, councillor Hamilton, QN three.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that, um, the notice that uh Mattson and Hamilton, so Mary and myself, put up um back in April twenty-one. We, it, that, that wasn't declaring that that it was a previous motion regarding the removal of shark net, shark nets in an effective deterrent, is a, as an effective deterrent. It was asking council to look into the data that supports the use of other devices. And so the question um posed in C is actually uh goes against the code of meeting practice three point one five, it cause im- implies wrongdoing by the council. It's saying what steps has councils taken um to speed up the process of giving the high level community concern? But, but the first statement, the first question actually, um it's contradictory to the motion and the points that were put forward by myself and Mattson in twenty-one. Well, it's a question, but what I'm, what I'm trying to point out is that the original, the opening question doesn't represent the motion that was passed on the twenty-four, twenty-seventh of April twenty-one. And point C is, in, is, what I've read in the code of meeting practice is goes against three point one five, implies wrongdoing by the council. So it's saying, what if, what steps has council taken to speed up the process of giving the high level community concerns?
Look, in, in, in light of the feedback, but it is also a question by virtue, so there's no proposition in front of us.
Yeah.
Um.
But.
I, I'm not really sure what it is that I can rule. Like, I, like, I can, I can ru- rule that there is an assert- assertion contained within the question which may be a misrepresentation. The, the resp- the response through the director would be the same, wouldn't it? Yes, through to the acting general manager?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, the council officer's interpretation of the question put in um point C was in relation to um how far the process has um progressed in terms of the trial and council's consideration of whether they, uh, whether we would want to um continue with shark nets or not. So that's how council officers interpreted um part C.
Uh, okay, so I, yeah, I disagree that the, um, that this is actually asking for that. It's asking for the level of community concern. It's asking for what um Mattson and myself asked for, and that was in point C of our own, was that um consider after significant community consultation and engage, engagement with the local community. So, um, yeah, I think that that's really the point.
Thank you. Can I please have somebody move that the um question on notice be read and noted? Thank you. Moved councillor Chapel, second councillor Olive. All those in favour?
Aye.
Those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. We now move to the confidential items. Uh, there being two confidential items. We'll just wait until the recording stops before I move to it.
Okay, can I please confirm that we are now back live recording? All right, thank you councillors. The outcome of the confidential ordinary meeting, CO14/23, the tender for supply of high pressure cleaning services, tender number SSROCK, the recommendation on the business paper was carried unanimously. I'm not going to read it all out, Mr Kelly can put it in the minutes. The recommendation for CS5/23 Heffernan Centre remediation variation of claim is that council receive and note this report and that councillors receive a briefing on the matter. The division was taken and it was carried. Thank you. At 12:39 I declare the meeting closed with there being no further business.
Thank you.